Thank you very much.
Okay, are we ready to get started? Okay. Is this on?
Yes ma'am.
You guys hear me?
No. Yes ma'am. I can hear you.
Okay, there we go. Oh wow, that was a lot louder than I meant it to be. Good afternoon, good evenings. Thank you for your patience. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. It's a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for April 25th, 2023. Let's go ahead and move to Pledge of Allegiance. Nick, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. Let's go ahead and move to roll call.
Student trustee Hogan. Student trustee Latino.
Here.
Trustee Withrow.
Here.
Trustee Johannes.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Here.
Trustee Napoleon Villarice.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez, Brito.
Here.
Trustee Quinlan.
Here.
Trustee Delphine Pope.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you very much. We will move to the Statement of Cooperation. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance and community college leadership, and to lead by examples for our Peralta colleges. The full statement of cooperation is attached to this agenda, but in summary, we've committed to: Build trust and seek to understand each other, to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols, and model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding those commitments, and these commitments, in words and in action. Thank you very much. We'll move to Report of Action Taken in Close Session. I don't believe we have anything to report out. Can you confirm VP Quinlan? Sasha, do we have anything to report out from? I don't believe we do.
No ma'am.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. 3.6, Approval of the Agenda. Motion please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. VP Quinlan and trustee Withrow, roll call.
Student trustee Hogan.
Yes.
Student trustee Latino.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Yes.
Thank you sir. Trustee Napoleon Villarice.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, Brito.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 3.7, Approval of the Minutes. Motion please.
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Withrow, second.
Second.
Second, trustee Reese, roll call.
Student trustee Hogan.
Yes.
Student trustee Latino.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Villarice.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, Brito.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 3.8, Approval of the Minutes from the Special Board Meeting on Tuesday, April 8th. That was the Enrollment Academy. Motion please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Withrow and VP Quinlan, roll call.
Student trustee Hogan.
Yes.
Student trustee Latino.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Villarice.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, Brito.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. 3.9, Associated Student Government Reports. Let's go ahead and start with the College of Alameda. Do we have anybody from COA with us?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to Berkeley City College.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Cool. So on April 12th, I attended the CCC advocacy in April event, where I was able to meet with our local representatives. Senator Nancy Skinner, Senator Steve Glaser, Assemblymember Tim Grayson, and Assemblymember Buffy Wicks. We talked about AB 46, which is Cal Grant Reform, AB 1630 Housing Development Near Campus, and also AB 1275, which is the Browns Act, with the Zoom and Agenda policies. And then in terms of... Oh, so then we have ASPCC elections results are now out. I believe there's still a couple of positions that are still vacant. And if students are interested, they can apply to those this upcoming fall with the new board. Also, Black Student Success Week is happening this week for an hour every day from 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM. I was invited to speak at the panel today, where I was able to discuss about policy and actions. The SSSC's Region 3 will be hosting the Monthly Delegate Assembly, which will be this Friday from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. Also, the MSA and Basic Needs have made a designated space for students to pray slash meditate on campus. The room is 014, and it's called the Reflection Room. I believe it's open Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Also, on campus, we have express registration, which is taking place virtually and also in person. Every Tuesdays, we have free food for students on campus, as well as every Thursday, we have our food pantry. Also, Eid Mubarak to all the Muslims. And then, for the students who are planning on transferring, congratulations on your process. And I conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go to Laney College.
Thank you, Sasha. Good evening, Pirata Districts. I'm Amololo Latulag representing Laney College. And here is my report. Class of 2023 commencement ceremony will take place on Friday, May 26th, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Laney College Football Stadium and the Field House. Tickets are not required for graduates, friends, and family to attend the graduation ceremony. All Laney College students are invited to join ALSOC and Laney Leadership to express their concerns about the studies at Laney College. The date is May 3rd, 2023. We have two sessions for classes and for evening classes. So for the day's classes, it's going to be from 12:30 PM to 1:30 PM. And the second session is from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Location is the conference room, fourth floor of the Student Center. The Speech and Leadership Club is presenting, we exist, on April 26th, 2023, at a Laney Quad, from 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM. I sincerely appreciate your attention this evening, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move to Merritt College if student trustee Hogan has a report.
Um, no, not today. I don't have a report today.
Okay, thank you, student trustee. We will go ahead and move to the Peralta Classified Senate Report.
Hi, good evening. Let me just adjust quickly here. Okay. Yes, well, good evening all, good evening Board of Trustees, Peralta Community College employees, students, and community members. I have basically just two items. The first will be a brief report from the Laney Classified Senate. And then I'd like to speak on behalf of the Senate, the Peralta Classified Senate, around hiring observations in our hiring and retention dilemmas. So if we could start with the Laney Senate, this comes from Hope Lane, who is our Classified Senate President for Laney. And she writes that our first caring campus coaching sessions took place on Friday, April 7th. In those sessions, they discussed efforts on how classified professionals can support students effectively and efficiently during their educational journey. Some commitments included implementing name tags for staff, as well as what is being referred to as a 10-foot rule, acknowledging students within a 10-foot radius. Classified professionals expressed concerns about professional development opportunities as well. They also are wanting to share more of the coaching sessions at future meetings. Laney's classified professionals, Katrina Santos and Arlene Lontak, were awarded the We Rise Award, and will be presented with it to them at Laney's Employee Appreciation, it looks like, this coming Friday. Thank you to all who assisted Katrina Santos with the Laney Pantry Food Giveaway this semester, and there are a bunch of names here that would like to be acknowledged, including Judy Wong, Arin Teligen, Shanice Milliken, Alisa Leon, Lily Leon, Yi Ping Wang, Vice President of Instruction Becky Obsada, and Dean Angel Fuentes, Elwood Jefferson, Patricia, looks like Patricia Maldonado, pardon me. And lastly, that the African-American graduation is in need of volunteers to assist on the event occurring Saturday, May 20th, that will take place at the Evergreen Baptist Church in Oakland. Volunteers are needed from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That will actually conclude Laney's report. Thank you very much, Laney, and our classified president there. I'd like to next turn to some offers, observations around our hiring and retention dilemmas. When the Senate does observations, I mean, we are also looking for solutions. And so, before I address the contentious matter of hiring at Peralta, let me first remind you of the Classified Senate Mission Statement. So in part, it reads: "It shall be the mission of the Peralta Classified Senate to enhance the decision-making process by participating in the shared governance of PCCD. The Peralta Classified Senate will bring a pragmatic, collaborative, frontline perspective to bridge policymaking and procedural implementation and promote professional growth and development. In keeping with the PCCD Mission Statement, we will, through direct participation in district-wide governance, increase understanding, communication, transparency, and raise the quality of service, thus improving students' educational experience in support of student success." I am reminding us of these important words for two reasons tonight. One, allow me to acknowledge some accusations of a perceived conflict of interest. Because of... Well, I should say, because as the classified, me as the Classified Senate President, I am also acknowledging my Union Chapter Officer role. Not only was I duly elected to both roles, there are clear guidelines that prohibit serving in specific leadership roles. But there are no conflicts in the Senate and Union roles in which I serve. I, in fact, make it a point to be hyper-aware of the delineations between Union and Senate and to provide guidance to others when we are getting close to that line. Second, and even more important, in regards to raising the quality of service, thus improving students' educational experience in support of student success, I and my team of senators would be guilty of not doing our jobs if we were not making observations, bringing options for change, and playing by the rules, and being those who implement change and improvements at Peralta. So, in regards to hiring, allow me to make some observations, which may include some contradictions. For years, there has been talk of a hiring freeze, which is often used as a first-go-to answer when a vacancy occurs and there is no action to fill the position other than to assign additional workload to staff. Sometimes, an hourly worker is hired, sometimes a working-out-of-class opportunity is created, sometimes staff take on overtime. And just as often, sometimes nothing is done for months and even years without an explanation. For many, it doesn't feel like we are in a hiring freeze. Just today, there were three hiring announcements pushed out. And on its surface, that sounds great. We need staff in many areas around the district. But while we are mindful of the delicate balance of the 50% rule, it is the opinion of some that Peralta should reevaluate how we implement that rule, especially as it pertains to instructional assistants who directly support classrooms and laboratories. But even so, none of this speaks to the perception of a hiring freeze with respect to classified staff. So the first ask tonight, that is a challenge to all by the Classified Senate, is to make it clear throughout relevant shared governance bodies throughout the colleges and various departments, starting with PBC and all the way down. we need to know the actual status of hiring, where there is flexibility, and where we may find creative opportunities to fill our hiring gaps. In recent days, the topic of the abundance of interim management appointments has again resurfaced. One shocking number, should it turn out to be accurate, is 110. That is the total number of administrators around the district. At last count, when we looked at that number, it was closer to 85. There are many ways of looking at this number, such as a simple division by five, that is, the number of PCCD campus sites. That's an astounding 22 administrators per site. As we are all likely aware, even the lowest-paid administrator makes more than the highest-paid staff member. To be fair, I'm not saying that we don't need administrators and that administrators don't make contributions. But what I and others have previously noted is that administrators need staff more than staff needs administrators, especially administrators who are serving for an indefinite period of time, who have long or no long-term commitments to us, and are largely held unaccountable for their decision-making. And in some cases, they don't even have decision-making power. So the second ask by the Classified Senate tonight is for a task force, perhaps the Chancellor's Working Group, the new BAM Committee, but nevertheless, whatever it is, some objective group of dedicated and talented people to come together to evaluate our administrative infrastructure and to bring recommendations, keeping their eyes, ears, and brains on the operational and financial aspects of this district. Lastly, I'd like to turn our attention to the general issue of accountability and transparency around regular administrative hires. Unlike classified and faculty employees, it's our understanding that administrators are hired on a contract basis, which are typically renewed every one to three years. Too many of us, oh yeah, I should say, yeah, too many of us, this explains why administrators are often unable to affect substantive change in our district, largely for fear of not making the boss happy and losing their jobs. To a certain extent, we should all be mindful of losing our jobs if we aren't doing our jobs. But even more importantly, we should be more mindful of keeping our jobs by doing our jobs and being allowed to do our jobs. For staff, our performance is supposed to be reviewed every year or two. It's in our contract. What we do know is that other community colleges are more successful than Peralta at hiring and retaining good managers. What we often lack as staff is the support we really need from managers to succeed at our work and thereby help our students to succeed. What the Senate is asking is that we tap into some of those best practices at some of the other colleges. They do exist. In the case of managers, where the cost is significantly more than hiring staff, hiring more managers is too simple as a solution for the conundrum that we are in. Our students need and deserve managers who are willing to take risks, to support staff, and to be strategic of when and where we spend our funds. As I previously said, we know that managers need our staff for everything from processing requisitions, direct service to students, behind-the-scenes service to students, graduations, and everything in between. But it's also the case that staff needs administrators with a strong aptitude for leadership. The Senate encourages staff, who are generally here much longer than managers, to be provided with more opportunities for evaluating managers. But we are also, yeah, we are also aware that there is a process for evaluating managers, but that process is largely unspoken. But even better, I and others feel that Peralta can and should do more to promote staff into management positions, especially those staff who have proven themselves, who have been here for a long duration. For example, unlike other colleges, we have no policy for, or or in regards to some sort of provisional hire. That is, we are unable to promote a staff member who may have the particular, or may not have the VMQs, may not have a specific degree, but are otherwise impeccably qualified for a position. Recognizing that we can't do everything at once, there are some meaningful changes that we can institute almost tomorrow. The Senate intends on leading these and other initiatives at Peralta that will not only benefit staff, but will benefit the operational functions of Peralta. And that will conclude our Senate report for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to the Academic Senate report. We have Dr. Moore with us.
Good evening. President Delphine Polk, Chancellor Jackson, members of the board, and presidents and guests, wanted to report on a couple of things. Last week, about five of the Senate, the Academic Senate members, attended our statewide Senate meeting down in Southern California. And what I was, what I walked away from it was feeling a little bit better that many of us, many colleges and districts, and certainly our own, really find it hard to look into a crystal ball and see where we could get our FTES. It was noted at our PBC meeting last week, I guess, last week, Friday, that we make our colleges free, but people don't break down our doors. And part of that issue is, is I think Dr. Jones likened it to, "Oh, if you had Mercedes and you reduce the price to zero, and how many people would be breaking down the doors trying to get to the, get to them? But if you have some other vehicle, then how many would actually come to that?" And I think that we, we need to acknowledge and, on one hand, applaud ourselves because we're doing much better than we were before we did the free. So I'm not trying to deny that. I think, I think this is going a lot better. But I think all of us are struggling with, when you have major districts like ours and other areas, other districts and colleges down 30%, and we're at about 35%, it really shows that across the board, it's hard. And as the CEOs have gone to their meetings, the trustees have gone to theirs, and all of the different folks have gone to their spring meetings, I don't know, I haven't run across yet somebody with some brilliant plan that could get us to increase our FTES in, in large, large numbers. And if any of you have gone to a meeting and, and found the, the secret, I would greatly hope that you will provide it to us. I say this because as we move along and we get close to the cliff, and those of you who know what I'm talking about in terms of 2026 with the money from the feds, there has to be enormous pressure on the state chancellor and the governor to say there's going to be a lot of colleges and districts who are going to be below what they need to be. And I think that, that at least gives us hope that we're going to somehow muddle through, through all of this. As we talked with our consultants at the legislature, the legislature tells them that they keep asking, "If we give all of this money to the California Community Colleges and they actually lose enrollment, what does that mean?", right? And so when I start to hear that coming from our legislatures, I really think that we need to look at, one, how effective is our communication about all of the wonderful programs we have? And to really try to be more effective in educating our legislatures? Because I also heard one question being posed, "Why is, why is our SCIF at 30%? Why isn't it at 100%?" And so when you start to hear more and more people talking that way, then it really puts some pressure on us. The one thing that I'd have to say that is coming up, and it's coming up pretty quickly by, by some standards, there was a, there was a legislation that basically required the CSU and the UC to come up with a guaranteed pathway, General Ed is called Cal Getze Pathway to, to the UC. And everybody was, six months ago, a year ago, were saying, "Oh, if you could get the UC Senate to agree on anything relatively shortly, that would be amazing." And people have talked about the problems that have existed in the past when, when, when this effort has, has occurred. But then hearing from the people who are working with the intersegmented Senate, both at the CSU, UC, and the, and the California Community Colleges, "No, UC is actually moving quickly, more quickly than we anticipate, anticipated." So within the next couple of years, we're going to have this General Ed pathway. The question for me is, is what are the implications for ADTs? What are the implications for the various disciplines, various courses that we teach? Because it's going to affect us in a, in, in certain ways. And if you've noticed in terms of AB 705, or, or even now, AB 1705, when the legislature really does away with a certain segment of the, of what we teach, that obviously affects what we're offering. So we're going to be getting the, the GE Subcommittee of CIPD going on this and to really engage our CIPD, our curriculum committees, and everybody, starting now, this upcoming year, so that way we could prepare for it and not let it slam us in the face when it occurs, because we know it's going to occur, and we know it's going to occur relatively sooner rather than later. So those are the takeaways that I had from, from the, from our visit at the state. What I wanted to let people know is that we had forwarded two resolutions to our chancellor and to our president of the trustees. One's a resolution on the adoption of a low-cost textbook definition. Our colleges' OER committees have been working diligently at, at not only zero text, zero-cost textbook, but really trying to come up with a common definition of what low cost is. And right now, each of the colleges kind of does their own thing. And part of that, this effort is in a wider effort among state Senate, academic Senate, of trying to define what a low cost is. And so we have forwarded to, to the chancellor and to President Delphine Polk this request that our IT department work with these committees. They have already what the icon can be, and we need to move on it so we could properly provide the digital schedules with a clear descriptor of what low cost is. And so we're looking at that. And part of the discussion that had gone on, just so people know that there was a discussion going on, is that our students statewide really wants it as low as possible. We, on the faculty side, have discussed this, and, and at the, at the state, they're looking at $30. Here at Peralta, we decided on $50 as being the, what would be defined as, as low. And part of that effort is because we have a lot of CE courses that require lots of, lots of things that students are required to buy. If we ever get into a situation with foundations or, or with our presidents or our chancellor raising up money, you might want to start a fund for student, student textbooks or, or the things they have to buy, and culinary, and, and in cosmetology, there's a lot of stuff that they typically have to buy. And so we came up with the $50 cost, low cost. The other one that we forwarded just today is asserting faculty primacy and teaching modality. There's been a lot of discussion last year at the Senate, the state senate, they passed this resolution on faculty primacy and teaching modality. And so today, we sent this to the chancellor and to the president of the Board of Trustees. And what we really want people to understand is that when you talk about modality, you're talking about curriculum. Because within the curriculum, we basically indicate whether or not this course is going to be taught in, online or not. It's called a DE, a D E N D O. And so we, as faculty, come up with the curriculum. We come up with our, whether or not we want to teach it or have it taught online. And so this is core to what the faculty are about. I think that we need to ensure that as we go along and, and plan and schedule, we want more students on the college campus. we want more students, uh, on the college campuses. I don't think anybody objects to that. I think what we need to look at is to make sure that we offer online, uh, hybrid, you know, all kinds of different ways of us providing, uh, uh, courses to students. And to really ensure that, uh, the faculty are involved in that. Because there are certain courses, uh, that shouldn't be taught online and should be, uh, taught face-to-face and vice versa. So those are the two that we're, uh, going to be looking, uh, to see if we could get, uh, some, um, to really start to, uh, work on in these next coming, uh, weeks. And we look forward to graduation and I'm assuming all, everybody's doing face-to-face graduations, right? Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing nods. So please, I hope all of you certainly attended. There's going to be a plethora of other, uh, graduations. Uh, the, the individual ones get really funky is the only way that I could term it. Because everybody wants to do their own way of, of celebrating their, uh, their, uh, their graduation. So I encourage all of you to attend, uh, those as well. So, uh, we look forward to, uh, those things. And Rudy, I hope in your president message, you invite your trustees to the employee appreciation, uh, day. And, and they could play all of the different activities and stuff that, uh, we have lined up. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and move to three point twelve, public communications on matters that are not on the agenda. Now is the time. Do we have any speaker cards, Mark?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay.
One for Fredita Williams.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name is Fredita Williams. Um, I'm a third-year student in the Providence Community College District. Um, and Berkeley City College is my home college. Um, I want to start by just giving you a little background about myself. If that's okay. Um, I lived alone since I was seventeen, have been paying rent since I was seventeen. I've worked two jobs to support myself. Um, and I'm, I care deeply about my education. Um, now I want to talk about the experience I had with my chem one-day class at Merit. Um, I had issues that I came to the professor with. Um, and after not experiencing any change, I went to the dean of the department. Um, he didn't reply to me. Well, I communicated with him via email. He did not reply to me for five weeks. Um, and he only replied after I visited his office and asked for his superior's email. Um, this continued for the rest of the semester with increasingly hostile attitudes and communication from both the professor and the dean. Um, in January, when checking my grades for transfer updates I had to submit to colleges, I noticed I had a D in chemistry. I again emailed my dean, who took another two weeks to get back to me, again, only after I emailed Lilia Chavez concerning filing an academic grievance. His answer to me was short, brief, and it was obvious he didn't care to investigate my concerns. On April twenty-first, I was notified that the academic grievance committee concluded the professor. I'm sorry. On April twenty-first, I was notified that the academic grievance committee concluded the professor did indeed give me a D in bad faith, as spelled out in A P five-five-three-zero. The professor was given tasks to complete and was given a three-month timeline to complete them. As college decisions continue to roll out, I am worried I will never get the chance to present myself as a hard-working scholar I really am. I'm preparing appeals for many schools and have deadlines that are not conducive with the three-month period she was given. After already being denied the opportunity to be judged fairly by colleges, I am seemingly supposed to continue to wait on the staff at Merit at the expense of my time, mental health and future endeavors. So I am here to ask for your help. I need support and receiving timely communication from the staff at Merit and assurance that action items are handled promptly. I am incredibly passionate about my education and I'm heartbroken to know I didn't get a fair shot at a four-year university despite all my hard work and sacrifice. This should be, uh, this should be someone's priority and so far I have continuously been failed by the staff at Merit. I have done my due diligence and I'm pleading for someone else to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else who would like to speak on non-agenda matters?
No, Madam President, that is all we have.
Okay. We will move to three point one-three thirteen, and that's the chancellor's reports.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I want to, um, thank our student who just, uh, made the presentation and to let you know that unfortunately we can't address that. But, um, please, visit my office and get my card, which has my information on how you can move forward. And I'm sure that Dr. David Johnson, who is the president and who will be going first in, uh, update, um, so that you know who he is, um, so that we can address that. Students are first for us, always have been and always will be. Um, so we heard what you said. Um, so we'll start with Dr. Johnson and we'll just follow the line. It will next will be, uh, Dr. Rudy Vesikoff and Dr. Angelica Garcia. And then standing in for Dr. Diana Basrami would be Maurice Jones, who is the acting vice president of instruction at College Valamita, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Chancellor. Um, President Delphine Polk, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, colleagues and community members, good evening. Uh, tonight I'm going to keep it, uh, fairly brief. Just have two items. Um, one is to announce that Merit College is partnering with the nonprofit organization called A Case for Cannabis in an effort to secure a one-point-two-million-dollar grant, uh, from the city of Oakland. And the purpose of the grant is to identify organizations, institutions that will prepare workers for the cannabis industry as part of the city's cannabis equity program services initiative. And should we be awarded this grant with, um, A Case for Cannabis, we're going to institute a training program that will provide, uh, skill-building in various areas of the cannabis industry, including manufacturing, testing, um, and hospitality. And we're also going to work to develop relevant contextualized curriculum and science of business so that our students are better prepared to attain competitive positions within the industry. And the second thing I'd like to share is that on April eighteenth, last Tuesday, we opened up the Africana Center Part Two. We have one at Merit, but this one was located, is now located at McLeimans High School. We had nearly a hundred people show up to that, educators and students. Uh, the new Africana Center, if you've never been to McLeimans, Thirtieth and Myrtle, it's located in the, uh, the library, which has also been redesigned. And the center itself is located within the library and it's extremely warm and welcoming, uh, student-friendly, uh, space. We had, uh, Dr. Siri Browns, who's currently a faculty member at Merit. We had former trustee Linda Handy was there and current professor Denia Martinez. And our keynote speaker, for those who are local and have been here around, Davy D., you might recognize that name, uh, was our keynote speaker. He's a, a very, uh, activist and artist and hip-hop historian. So all in all, we look forward to continuing this exciting partnership with McLeimans as we plan the formal reopening of the Africana Center at Merit College. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, President Johnson. Good evening, Chancellor Jackson, President Delphine Polk, members of the governing board, colleagues in education, valued students, and of course, appreciated members of our community. In the written report you received this evening, about half of it is, uh, dedicated to our students with stories of student success, uh, full-ride scholarships, transfers and a number of other things. And, uh, I would like to focus on some other things as part of my report this evening. First, as, uh, ASLC President Omolola Atalagbe referenced, on May third, uh, my office in conjunction with ALS, ASLC will be conducting two listening sessions for all students to hear concerns over facilities and, uh, we're going to have them at different times of the day to accommodate both our day and evening students so that they have an opportunity to have a voice. I would also like to appreciate, uh, the three department chairs as well as the faculty, staff and students who, two Wednesdays and two Thursdays ago, uh, welcomed me and my team, uh, into the areas of cosmetology, wood technology and welding, uh, just to check on them and check on conditions. I want to appreciate, uh, Vice Chancellor Smith, who's assured me that the work on airflow is in full swing and will be taking place. And also, uh, just want to thank her office and the team at Laney, uh, that, for the hot water that is now running, uh, especially in the cosmetology lab. I will be making good on my promise to have my next haircut there and will be making a donation for a scholarship, uh, to, to a student in cosmetology, um, for the cost of essentially what would be a haircut. So I just wanted to share that update to you as far as our facilities are concerned. Uh, left you a couple of things this evening. I'll, I'll go ahead and refer to the first of these, which is a flyer about the CTE open house. And I want to thank the many Laney colleagues who reminded me to speak about that this evening. And, um, would, would like to, yes, and like to, uh, share with, uh, the board as well as our community that the CTE open house is this Saturday, April twenty-ninth from ten to two o'clock. We've already had, this is amazing, four hundred and two RSVPs for this event, uh, members of the community, students, colleagues. And among those, roughly fifty will be coming from the OUSD Office of African-American Male Achievement. They've actually reserved about fifty spots to attend. Uh, this is going to be an amazing vibrant event as it was last year and certainly look forward to it. Not only will students and the community get information about our many great programs, the twenty-one that we'll be putting on displays, but on, onsite registration and counseling will also be available along with, uh, food and, and entertainment and a number of other things. As far as the second thing that I, that's, that you find before you, um, our dean of Athens Science, uh, true astronomer at heart, uh, has prepared, uh, eclipse glasses for the two, uh, two upcoming eclipses at the end of this year as well as, um, in two thousand twenty-four. And I just, uh, brought pairs for the members of the board as well as our chancellor. And staying on the theme of attire, you might notice I have two pins tonight, not one. This is because, um, Laney College is now an institutional member thanks to our ongoing collaboration with Oakland Rotary. Um, our college is now a, a member of, of the Oakland Rotary. And on April twentieth, uh, I was actually inducted as a Rotarian, which is something neat and explains the second pin. Certainly want to thank, uh, Karen Friedman, uh, who has been an ongoing collaborator with Laney, uh, whether it's been food distribution, um, discussions and questions around student housing and a host of other things. And really look forward to this, this new experience that, that's ahead. To complete my report, um, and I, I do appreciate President Gonzalez for sharing this. But this Friday, um, from eleven to two PM, we are having employee appreciation at the Field House. And it gives me great pleasure to announce, uh, the We Rise, uh, wardies, um, that out, honor our outstanding employees for the year. Student employees, we are pleased to congratulate Allison Fletcher, who works in the president's office. Classified professionals, we actually ended it voting in a tie. Uh, Katrina Santos and Arlene Lontak will be receiving the award. For faculty, Professor Mallory Barkdell in engineering, as well as Professor Francis Howard, who supports the library, will be honored for, uh, faculty. And then among our administrative ranks, in addition to being congratulated for her twenty-fifth year of service to Peralta, Acting Vice President of Administrative Services, Dr. Deddy Del Rosario, will be recognized as the outstanding administrator. And with all of this good news, I'll go ahead and conclude my report. Thank you.
Good evening, um, President Delphine Polk, um, a little bit of echo, yeah? Maybe I'll sit right here. Um, trustees, Chancellor Jackson, colleagues and community members. In addition to the written report that you have in your packet, I want to just, um, share three new items. Um, the first is, as you heard Mazin Said, our Associated Student Body President, he was, um, on the panel today for the statewide webinar Black Hour for Black Student Success Week. The focus today was on policy and, um, more specifically talking about how it was that Berkeley City College and the Peralta Colleges showed up for students, especially during the pandemic. Things that were touted were the support with the food services, both the pantry and the prepared meals, the technology support, Chromebooks, laptops, hotspots, and the opportunity for students to remain connected to the colleges during a time when, in the pandemic, um, it was very easy to feel isolated. Additionally, um, he shared that within the Umoja program, the level of individualized care and support, the ways in which Umoja alumni who often are transferred, come back and are part of the program, um, and really highlighted how it is that students, um, are our very own alums are often the best sources of support to encourage, um, students. He did phenomenally well. He was one of two students on the platform with folks from across the country. Um, so we were really proud of him and you all should be as well, because he certainly represented Peralta Colleges and that statewide webinar. Um, the second item that I want to share, that's not in your board report, is that yesterday Berkeley City College received notification that we are one of fifty-nine colleges throughout the California community system that's receiving a, and it's long-form, uh, culturally responsive pedagogy and practices, um, grant. In short, this is a grant that's coming from the chancellor's office that's specifically geared towards faculty professional development. There were, um, a large number of proposals that were submitted and Berkeley City College is one of fifty-nine. And so once the Board of Governors approves and will receive just shy of three hundred thousand dollars, um, the grant was titled Changing Approaches, Transforming Lives, Implementing Asset-Based Equity, Equity-Minded Pedagogy and Practices. In short, it's to support a comprehensive development program for faculty to engage in equity-minded teaching practices, reviewing their data, communities of practice, um, supporting the very good work that happens in this district with the, um, poker peer online course review process and the equity rubric. And I am just incredibly grateful and want to thank our faculty leaders Heather Dodge, Scott Josida, Alejandro Woolpert Perez, and administrators, uh, Dr. Martina Mucha Flores and Lisa Cook for their work to collaborate and submit in this very competitive, um, grant process. It really is, um, an opportunity to pull the very best of the work that we're trying to do to, to serve students. And lastly, uh, tomorrow is Administrative Professionals Day. Um, just prior to the meeting started, I did send a message out to the BCC community and like most recognition days that should not give us a pass to not give daily appreciation and gratitude, um, to our colleagues. And so really want to express a warm gratitude and thank you for our classified professionals, not only at BCC, but throughout the district and the other colleges. From colleagues who have been here a mere few weeks, uh, even as recent in my office, literally, I think she's been here three weeks. Um, to those who have been here for thirty years plus, thank you for all that you do. Um, many of our classified professionals have been present and serving the college even amidst the pandemic and in those early days of shelter in place. And, um, so to that end, the administrative leadership team at BCC would like to invite our BCC classified professionals to a morning reception tomorrow in four fifty-one B from nine-thirty to ten-thirty. No programming, no speeches, just come grab some coffee, grab some morning refreshments and be in community and know that you are very much appreciated. So de todo corazón, mil gracias for the work that you do in service of students. That concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, um, good evening, trustees, uh, Dr. Jackson, colleagues, uh, students and community members. Maurice Jones, I'm interim, um, Vice President of Instruction sitting in for Dr. Diana Byrami. Uh, in addition to the board report that you have in front of you, I'd like to just mention three other items which highlight our engagement with our community and community partners. Uh, on April thirteenth, the Alameda Chamber and Economic Alliance hosted a lunch and learn where COA had the opportunity to, uh, engage in dialogue with the city of Alameda about COA's academic programs and services and how COA can assist employers, um, to discover new talents through internships, apprenticeships and job placements. Uh, Dr. Jackson, uh, trustee with trustee Whitrow and Johannes, as well as COA administrators, but faculty and students were in attendance. On April nineteenth, uh, COA hosted its first roundtable after the pandemic. It was a great opportunity for COA to reaffirm and strengthen our relationship with our community partners to best serve the educational needs of our students and to discuss how to align community, um, and industry, um, labor needs. Our community partners had the opportunity to tour our new liberal arts building. Uh, in particular, they were able to, um, visit the apparel design, uh, and manufacturing department, Adam, and saw students and Professor Derek Biazza working in different stages. And, um, at this event, um, trustee Whitrow and the superintendent Valamita Unified School District, among others, were in attendance. And our, in my words, uh, one of our, our biggest events we had was last Friday. We had a career discovery day at COA where we had over a hundred and seventy-five high where we had over 175 high school students come to visit our college and they were able to visit our different CE programs and learn about them and possible future career opportunities within these programs. And finally, I'd like to just take the opportunity just to mention that we are again having our spring intercession, which is doing great. We've added new classes to accommodate students in the waitlist and these classes are filling up quickly. And that will conclude my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, presidents and acting presidents. I would like Mark Johnson, who is our Executive Director of Marketing Communications and Public Relations, to give a just a brief update of some accolades that they've garnered at the last CC Pro meeting, Mark.
Thank you, Chancellor Jackson. Good evening trustees and colleagues and community members. So I traveled down to Los Angeles a couple of weeks ago with Marcus Creel, the graphic designer from the district and Tom Rizza, the Public Information Officer at Berkeley City College. We attended the Community College Public Relations Organization Annual Conference, that's better known as CC Pro. And it was a really great conference to talk to other public information officers across the California system and share stories. It was definitely an educational meeting that often felt like therapy at the same time. It was a really great experience. But in particular, it was very gratifying in that we won three awards at the CC Pro Award Ceremony. So we took third place in the semester schedules. So a shout out to Marcus Creel, the graphic designer. He was thrilled that he was able to collect that in person. That was for all four of the semester schedules for the spring semester. We put them online in November of 2022. They all had a very distinct family resemblance and played up the fact that fall or spring was free. We got second place in the before and after category for the redesign of our website. I want to give a shout out to Erin Harbor and Jonathan Freeman, our web content developers for all of their hard work on that project. As you recall, we relaunched our website in HubSpot platform from a design that had been around for about 10 years in the WordPress platform. Well, we did that in February of 2022 and we were recognized for the the big improvement that we made on our website. So that was gratifying. And most gratifying of all was that we took first place in the media success story category. That was an amazing collaborative effort with the college presidents and myself. We collaborated along with Chancellor Jackson and Vice or Deputy Chancellor Droger on our Spring is Free press release that we sent out in November. It got coverage from San Francisco Chronicle, KTVU TV, Oakland Side, Oakland Voices, many other places. And it was really great to be recognized for that that media success story. So thank you all for the time and that's it for me.
Thank you, Mark. Congratulations. I just would be derelict if I didn't make some corrections to information that was presented. We were advised that there are 110 administrators in the district. There are not. There's 84 that are in the district. That equals to 17 staff per administrator. And the national average is eight to 10 staff per administrator. So I just wanted to make clear the information that the board gets is accurate based upon data. So that concludes our presentations. Thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead, trustee.
Just wanted to highlight one wonderful thing in case you didn't read your board packet. So one of our presidents is going to be sitting at a table with Lady Gaga, George Clooney, Kerry Marshall, and appointed to the White House Arts and Humanities Committee. That is amazing. We want autographs.
Yeah, I'll give you my list later. Okay, Chancellor, let's go ahead and move to 4.1. I believe we have Dr. Benjamin here.
Yes, we do. Dr. Benjamin, please. She's going to give us an update of our chancellor's search and we have some action items. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Benjamin, Dr. Helen Benjamin. Thank you.
Thank you very much and good evening to everyone in attendance. It's a pleasure to be here. Just want to take some time to catch you up. As you know, we got a little behind because we were doing really important work and that, or you were. Really important work was to update the hiring policy. So that put us behind a bit. And one of the items you'll see in your board packet is yet another updated timeline that catches us up to where we where we should be at this point in the process. So that's just for you to see. You don't need to approve it or anything. The first thing you'll see there is the listing of the screening committee members. It is fully staffed. And so I know that Dr. McKinley's office took care of that, but the constituency leaders had to find people to participate. And so the list is there. I'll just pause to see if you have any comments or questions of of staff on that on the list of committee members.
Do we have any questions, colleagues?
Okay, that's primarily for for your information. And then where we need to spend and the committee, our first meeting will be on May 10th. So that's coming up very, very soon. And we'll be back here in on in your May 25th meeting for you to look at the profile that we're going to work on part of that today. So as you know, we sent out a survey around priorities. And before we start looking at this, I just want to remind you and everybody who's participating that in this process, you get so many different opportunities to see the candidates. And so the priorities and qualities we're going to work on will be what these applicants write to. So the screening committee of 20 people will read those applications, determine who gets interviews. We're having a kind of lightning round in there that we've added of Zoom committees, maybe 30-minute interviews to determine which ones they want to spend more time with in an hour interview. So that's two looks right there. And then you've got the forums and anybody in the world who wants to see people on the forum or write comments are able to do that. So you you won't probably get every single thing you want in one activity, but think about all the different opportunities you have. And then you, at the end, you'll participate in the forums, you'll have an opportunity to spend time with the candidates in the way you desire. And so they will be, I think thoroughly examined by the time we finish. But tonight, the focus is on these priorities, what you're looking for in terms of the qualities you want in the individual. And then the priorities that the district is facing. What are those things that need to be done immediately? And so we sent out a list and I'm going to Sasha will project, but I'm giving the board a little packet so we can walk through and you can see the results. So it'll take me a minute. So Sasha has it up already. We're going to run through this fairly quickly, I hope. So 141 employees completed the survey. You can see the breakdown there. We had 10 student leaders, 46 classified staff, 51 full-time faculty, 13 part-time faculty and 21 administrators, giving us a total of 141. And each one of them completed the entire survey. There were no incomplete surveys. Four board members completed the survey. So you see there next nine priorities. This is front and back. Nine priorities that we asked people to rank just the top three. Just to run through quickly. So these are the nine priorities. After we you go through the results, you will be making a decision about and then you can add some if you like, but remember that the priorities are those urgent things that need to be taken care of in the district that will require the chancellor's attention immediately. And the applicants will have to write to these. So the first has to do with DEI, the second with finances, the third with morale, the fourth with budget planning, another aspect of the fiscal piece. The fifth has to do with communication throughout the district, the sixth participatory governance. You want a commitment to that and I'm sure evidence. And then the seventh has to do with inequalities in a variety of areas. And I know the district does quite a bit of work on that and is concerned about it. And this is also in your goals, if I'm recalling correctly. The eighth one has to do with partnerships with local business and industry and the ninth has to do with CEO board relationships. So those are the nine that we sent out there for people to respond to and they did give us some some feedback. So if you go to page three and if you look on the screen, you can see the top of page three. And I tried to group these in a way that at least made sense to me and then connect them to those priorities. So of those 141 people, these are the things they said they would like to see that they did not see in the the list that we had, although some of them were there, in my opinion. So the first one has to do with possessing a student's first orientation. I just summarized it that way, but there were four bullets there and you can see those are the words of the writers. And I just classified it as a student's first orientation. Yes. Nikki, you look, oh, I thought you were, all right. And then the second one has to do with finances. And that's contained in priorities two and four, maybe not those specific things, but that has to do with finances. And then I, these four comments and I know and I failed to look up this, but you have a goal. A board goal this year that has to do with looking at the district holistically. And Dr. Jackson, you might have to help me with this, but you know the one because she and I talked about it last week, but it's about improving the systems in the district. Collaboration has to do with collaboration, but it's so that things will run more smoothly. So I put these four bullets, these are the words of the writers again, in a category called Improving District Operations and Cooperation Between and Among the Colleges. And they're on different topics, on budget, on human resources, but these are the people's words. And I kind of said that might be part of priority three, but you might want to do something else with that. And then the fourth one, I lumped these five comments into a human resources category because they have to do with employees. I didn't see anything. I guess some of it has a little to do also with professional development, if you stretch it. But those five bullets, I just lumped into the human resources category. And we do have a a bullet on working with the staff to ensure they're empowered to do their jobs, which is human resources, but some of this doesn't exactly fit in that one. And then this last one, physical needs. That's just the facility and I listed those two there. And then these others, I just lumped into one category that I called other. The first, this person made the same comment on each one of the lists that all of them, that there's no point in prioritizing because they're all important. But as a board, you know, you need to have some focus in one year. You can't expect a person to do every single thing. Transparency, transparency within the Peralta system, revamped the entire website to make it user-friendly and easier to enroll. So I'm hoping that your award reflects that you've done some of that, Mark. And then transparency again, but there's a list of other things, district physical austerity and commitment. The last four, I just put down as advice because I didn't think they fit into, I don't know that they're a priority necessarily. That's just my thinking. So the first one, please do not hire anyone who has been fired from their previous job. Don't hire a merry-go-round administrator, one who just uses this position as a springboard to something better someplace else. Integrity, empathy, honesty. I'm sure that mean we and we do have that in the qualities. And then hire a chancellor who lives in the area. And I meant to look up the Ed Code provision that says you cannot legally require a person to live in a certain place. I do have it. That notation.
Yes, Benjamin, I just wanted to go back to your priority number three. It's a board goal number five, organizational effectiveness.
Yes, that's the one. It's a board goal, yes. Thank you. And then, let's see, so those were the suggested priorities from the people who completed the survey, the 141 people. We go to the next page and number five, we had three suggestions from the board. One has to do with a career education. Support faculty and students so they can strengthen their abilities and help with the local economy. And then the third, the two bullets there at the end have to both do with team building. And we do have morale and team building and that's mentioned in priority three. And then we move to qualities. And so we had eight qualities that we think the person should possess. The first has to do with core values and ethical principles. The second has to do with how the person communicates, good listener, effective in written and interpersonal skills, strong skills in recruiting and appointing outstanding staff, et cetera. Number four, of course, a commitment to collective bargaining and participatory governance processes. And five, an understanding in planning, development and the construction of educational facilities. Six, positivity and excitement to lead this district. Seven, ability to strengthen the Peralta brand and prestige. And then finally, an appreciation for the unique mission of community colleges. So that's what we put out there. The additional qualities that employees suggested, and I had a little more difficulty grouping these. They're almost all individual. Again, it's individual says they're all important. Don't prioritize them. Strong skills in individual and group accountability. We have the DEI one in the second bullet. The third one again has to do with putting students first. This next comment has to do with how administrators are treated in the district. This person is saying there's a lack of respect, et cetera, and the way people of color are treated, especially women, they think is not good and feels that this is part of the culture. It's accepted and it's encouraged. Ability to provide a clear vision has the next one. Someone who is invested in the community and will stay. That came up twice. People said they want somebody who will come and stay. And I think I've probably said this to you before, but when you look at the districts in the state or anywhere really who have kind of the best reputations or who are doing the best, it's the ones who've had stable leadership. Because every time you change your leader, you're starting over in a certain way. So stability is a need that people acknowledge here. The ability to maintain opportunities for those in the system with continual guidance and support in the student's career of choice, new buildings, mask requirement for COVID-19, commitment to supporting the individual colleges to be successful, skills to improve outdated facilities. Again, the living in the Bay Area came up, champion for healing, commitment to stay the course, accountability with staff that allows HR to discipline in a timely fashion and does not allow the lack to linger on the campus of, I guess, issues, creating a hostile work environment on campus. Uh, to linger on the campus of, I guess, issues, creating a hostile work environment on campus. Someone who does more than lip service about D E I and respecting everyone. And then additional qualities, these were from suggested by the board. And they're similar to the ones a- around team building and uh career education. So that is a kinda really quick and dirty. Little trip through those. The other piece, oh, she's so fast, it's up already. So. What we did next was to see how you compared uh the different groups of people. The student leader, classified staff, full-time staff, part-time staff, administrator, board of trustees. So if you look on the side of the page, this is um selection priorities, district chancellor's selection priorities at the top. Where there's most agreement on the one that's most important. Is ensure the student access, equity, and success are the primary focus of the district, and so you've got. Uh, student leaders saying that's number one, and part-time faculty saying that's number one. Administrators chose fiscal reforms as number one. And classified staff chose improving morale as number one. The trustees chose. Uh, budget planning process as number one. And faculty chose modern a commitment to participatory governance. As number one. I'll give you a few minutes to look at that, yes trustee.
Cindy, Dr. Benjamin, I just have a question for you, so for, only because there's only several of us that. Did reply for the board of trustees, so how did we? So if, if it says one, does that mean most of the four chose one, and then? How did, how did this, how does this work?
Of the.
So for the board of trustees as an example, in terms of the priorities, you have.
Right, that the majority, and I do have the further breakdown, I can send you, that the majority, so. The majority of the board members chose.
Of the four, okay.
Yes, of the four chose one.
Okay.
And can I just follow up on that?
Absolutely, so now we're ready for the discussion.
So when you were looking at that, it wasn't a weighted score, so if, if I had three. Were all three of mine calculated, so let's say I had fiscal reform as number three, did that get any weight at all? In the determination of whether that was a one, two, or you know, first, second, or third?
I cannot tell you, because I had a researcher do this for me.
Alright, so it could have been a weighted.
Yeah.
Uh, a, a weighted measure, alright, thank you.
So if we look on the backside of the qualities now. Everybody chose, each group had the same number one. I think that's significant, you're all on the same page, the quality that you want most in your leader is a person who has a strong set of core values. Based on ethical principles that value integrity, honesty, candor, fairness, humility, and flexibility. Every single group chose that one. And then the second one around communication was everybody's number two or number three, pretty close. So now we can have the discussion around what you want to recommend, if you want to. Remove any of the priorities, if you want to add different ones. Think about your current situation, what you're facing as a district. Are there priorities that should be here that are not here, are there qualities this person should possess? That are not listed, or do all of these work for you, or there ones you'd like to remove? Yes, oh, okay.
Any questions colleagues, oh, go ahead trustee.
I have, I kind of reworked um a couple of the priorities to bring more of, I think. What is coming out as important um in one sentence, so. I'm just gonna read it aloud, and, and I guess this goes to the operational and the financial and reorganization.
Okay, this is a new one.
Um, it.
Are you modifying?
It works off of implement fiscal re- reforms. The second priority, right, but it's updating it a little bit.
Okay.
So what I have here is continue, because we have started it, right, so continue fiscal. And technological, fiscal comma technological reforms. And functional map reorganization, because we just want to make sure the chancellor actually goes forward, the new chancellor goes forward with that. To ensure districts' financial and operational effectiveness and stability within the short and long term. I, I just feel like we have an opportunity to make the priorities not just kind of a simple sentence, because they're complex. And we need to really ensure that that chancellor both knows, but that we, we bring in. The substance and complexity to the priorities, uh, y'all, what do you think about? And, and wordsmith as much as possible, but do you see what I'm getting at? The fiscal, the technological, the functional map reorganization, and short and long-term financial stability, you get it.
Any objections?
Cindy, I, I like the concept. But if I were reading it, I might not understand it. That is, within the context of. Within the context of what we've been doing, that's understandable. But it's a little abstract. It's a lot of words, and, and it may just come across as jargon. And so there's something to be said for the simpler language.
Brevity is the soul of wit.
Well, I'm not very witty then, because I'm never brief.
I agree.
But you.
But I'm gonna join my colleague right now, though, uh, in the complexity of our uh. Intellectual capacity is uh really what I'm doing. I think it's complicated, I think it's overly wordy, I, to be, to be, you know.
Your preference is to keep it as it is?
I, I think so, I, I think it's just plainer.
Go ahead trustee.
I, I do understand both sides, um, actually, can we type it out and just read it all together, because a lot of these are pretty long as well, can we just? Read it and maybe even shorten it from there?
Um, Sasha, could you take the, I think we have the handouts, so if you could just bring up.
She has, she has the document.
Okay. And trustee, um, Valores, could you, yeah, could you read it again? So that Sasha could maybe capture it in a Word document and present it up.
Let me know Sasha if I need to slow down. So it's.
Yeah, let me, actually, can you just give me one minute, because I have it in a PDF right now, so I'm gonna pull it up in Word, so I can try to type it in as we go.
Okay.
And just to confirm, we are working on the composite, right?
Where, uh, if you go to the first page of the Word document, it's number two, it's number two on that document Sasha. On the Word document, first page.
The priorities results.
Hmm, hmm.
See, here's part of what I'm, I'm, where I'm tripping over the wording, Cindy, is the. Functional map reorganization, that only means something internally. And so somebody looking at a job description and you're saying. Uh, we'd like you to respond to that, I don't know, if I were applying for the job, I don't know how I would respond to that.
Yeah, and functional map is really California, and all of us don't know, is that right Stephanie? We know it's an accreditation requirement.
But something along the lines of organizational effectiveness, because that's kind of what we were getting to or.
So we don't have.
Right, so, but it's, you know, equally important, fiscal, technological, organizational effectiveness.
Maybe you need a separate one on organizational effectiveness.
But then we only have three priorities, right?
BP Quinlan?
Well, we, well, you can use any of these you want, they just chose, yeah.
I'm ready to go whenever you are.
So I would suggest uh aligning um. Aligning our budget with strategic master plan and strategic goals.
Uh, that would be connected to number four.
Um, and I think it would be connected to the one that uh.
The same one, number two.
That basically we're asking for. Aligning our budget, the strategic master plan and strategic goals.
Okay. If you would uh.
Read it aloud and then.
Allow me to just work on that and bring it back to you next round.
I think that's going to be better.
Both of them, I could do that if you want me to. I just need, what you have written down, and I think you're talking about what accreditation requires us to do in terms of. Having the budget and the planning.
Right.
The strategic planning linked.
Exactly, that our budget should be driven by our strategic plan and our strategic goal.
Okay.
Louis, if you look at priority number four. If that were in there, would that be markedly different than what you just said? Um, and I'm raising that because I think that number four speaks to both the substance of budget. Budget outcomes, but also planning processes, which I think has actually been kind of critical. I think. That's an area where, as a district, even if we haven't failed there or fallen down there. There's a widespread perception. That people aren't necessarily included, that the colleges are disconnected from the district, et cetera, and so I. You know, frankly, I think that's the planning processes that are as important as the alignment with strategic planning goals.
Well, that's what I, I said.
I think that's what he's saying.
Yeah, no, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm just looking at number four and saying, hmm, you know, that one looks.
We can word it so that.
Alright, you know, this is what happens when you get seven people word something.
Right.
Right, a dais.
If you let me, I think I can fix it in number four. Okay. And then I think I might be able to do something with number two also, so we don't have to work on it in the meeting.
Thank you, thank you for organizing all of this, uh, I, I'm a little confused, and maybe just because I'm new, um. Is this, so we're supposed to only choose three?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, okay, yeah, because I, I've seen job descriptions that have this type of. List of qualities and priorities before, so I was concerned that we.
Yes, so we used these before, we just started with these, we made, we wanted you to prioritize to see where each of the groups. Is on them, but of course you will have more than three, that's why I'm saying, so there are nine here. Are there, is there anything not covered? And this one we want on organizational effectiveness, that's what you were trying to get at, right? And we took off accreditation, because. Voila. Yeah, yeah, it's just part of what you do now, you don't have any sanctions, and so you can. You can uh behave normally.
So I guess this is my, a follow-up question, so then, when we prioritize, prioritize them, are we then as. As um chancellor, applicants get um, go through the process, are these, are we then weighing these priorities and scoring based on?
That's what we'll decide.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And, and to your question, I, I think trustee, because it's always Rita, that's what the uh screening committee. Makes that decision, they, they take this, they decide what the weight is. What is more important, and all of that deliberation takes place in that venue.
Yeah.
This is just so that the committee, as they move forward, have a scoring sheet. Based on priorities at the board, based upon input from our constituency groups and our community have identified, so.
So when we meet on the tenth, we'll work on this some more, based on what you give us tonight. And then it comes back to you, you have the final say. On these priorities, yes.
I'd like, I'd like to propose one additional word in that number one qualities. And, and the word would be curiosity.
Qualities are priority.
Uh, on the qualities, so we've got, you know, ethical principles, integrity, honesty, and. I think here curiosity is actually kind of important.
We're on page five.
Yeah, uh, well, it's the backside of this two-pager. And the very first list of qualities. Okay, strong core values based on ethical principles that value blah, 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 blah. And I'm wondering whether there would be any objection from my colleagues to adding the word curiosity. To that list of qualities that we seek in, in a leader.
Uh, I do like adding the word curiosity, because I think it leads into being progressive. The only thing is that it says it's based on ethical principles. And I'm not sure if curiosity will fall into the, into the realm of ethics, and I don't want to confuse what ethics really is. That's the only, I, I do like curiosity.
And, and I actually added one more word to that quality too as well. I actually put relentless.
Persistence.
Persistence, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any more words, phrases, sentences?
Anyone else?
Or qualities?
Yes, qualities.
So for qualities, they did have one change.
Okay.
Find it. I, it's for. Okay, so I have it at number eight, um, oh, where it says an understanding in planning and development, oh, wait.
Are you on page five in the survey document?
I'm looking at my notes, um, sorry, uh.
Oh, it's the one that has to do with uh planning and understanding and planning development and.
Oh, yes, um, and, and this one is really, again, you're, you're gonna see that these are things that are so important to me, so. Strike it out if y'all don't think it has any reason for being, so I have for an understanding and planning and development, I added. An acute understanding of financial management and planning. Comma, development and the construction of educational facilities, comma, and bond financing programs. So I just added, I believe, acute understanding, I don't know if that makes a difference. Um, and then I put financial management and planning, going back again, it keeps on going back to budget, finance.
So where did you put the financial management and planning?
Um, so right before in planning.
Okay.
Uh, an acute understanding of financial management and.
Okay.
An acute understanding.
Hmm, hmm. Okay, any objections to that?
Yes, so my problem with that statement, it, it doesn't lead to what. Uh, what, what we want those things then, I mean, is it to improve our educational facilities, is determined. You know, you know what I'm saying, is that we need something on the end to say where all that is going.
Yeah, I think, and maybe it's unclear, but because there's so much of the financial portion related to educational facilities. Both in terms of the bond, in terms of allocation, so it really is facilities, I think that this quality is really an understanding about facilities.
But what role do they play in making a successful college or district? Well, yes, I mean, people need to understand that, because.
Yeah.
Facilities get built for bright shiny objects, I think sometimes, as opposed to getting overall in a strategic plan.
So are you talking about maintenance of facilities, or are you talking about?
Yes.
The ongoing. the ongoing maintenance of facilities?
Okay, yes, yes.
I would agree, that's important.
Yeah. Does that answer your question, though, Louis? I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's important.
And this is related, though, to facilities.
It doesn't say maintenance, though.
That's what we were discussing, is whether or not we wanted to.
You want maintenance in there?
Ongoing maintenance, yeah.
Okay. Trustee Withrow's hands up.
Oh, go ahead, Bill.
I'm not sure exactly where this was said, but uh, to me, it's important that the the chancellor not only be invested in the community, which is kind of referred to a few times, but to be a leader in the community. Recognized leader, especially in the business community.
We'll get that in there.
I apologize, can you repeat that one more time and what number are you referring to? Is that for number six? Is it number six, trustee Withrow?
I think it's on um page number one where it talks about um, it's the one, two, three, the third highlighted, employ clear, open, accurate, timely, continuous throughout the district and within the community it serves. And is that where you're looking at?
Well, that's communication, but we have a community one in here. I know we do.
It could be in a number of places, but quality number six, I'd like to see someone who is invested in the community and committed to the long-term well-being of the district.
Okay.
But that along with that would be a leader within the community, especially in the business community, which is the hiring sector.
Okay.
I have a question just on the uh, which community are we talking about? Just a community, could be their community that they're in now, or the community that we're in?
The community you serve, external community?
It's the external community.
Yeah, and I.
The in quote, in our area, the Bay Area.
Yeah, I I wonder if it should just be community more broadly because the person may not be from the Bay Area, so.
No, what we're looking for is a quality that they developed, and they could be from New Zealand or wherever. But it when we're looking for a chancellor who, when they're here, becomes a leader in the community, especially in the business community, which is the hiring segment.
Okay, anything else?
Just to I think to jump onto what trustee Gonzalez Rito was saying, I think more so like because of their experience, at least the the ability to uh something, to to join the community or be a leader in the community, so I think the word ability, what you're looking for.
Yeah, I was thinking of potential too.
Yes, yeah.
But at this level, they ought to already have or possesses maybe, if we can get the right word.
Any other questions, colleagues, or comments? Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. See you in a moment.
Thank you, Dr. Benjamin.
Just one more question.
Yeah.
Don't we need to vote on?
I was gonna say, we have actions on here, so we should vote on this. Um, I believe we need to vote on the committee, which is four point two. Go ahead, BP Quinlan.
Move to approve.
Second. Second by trustee Reese, roll call.
And that was a first by trustee Quinlan?
That is correct.
Incument.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzales Yuen?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Villarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzales Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Delton Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes. Great, thank you very much. And then four point three, finalization of chancellor expectations and priorities. It's not tonight, right? Okay, we'll come back to this in another meeting. Okay, I believe that concludes our business on this item.
Thank you, Dr. Benjamin.
Thank you, Dr. Benjamin.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and move to our four point one presentation, data integrity update. Did I say four point one, five point one?
So I believe that Dr. Joker would like to introduce this um particular item. Um, it's an update from a previous report that we did, but I'll let um staff talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
As part of our ongoing um efforts to improve our data and how we report information to the state, we engaged um back, I think it was twenty twenty-one, right chancellor? Um, starting in twenty twenty-one, we engaged Cambridge West and Deborah Ludford to help us with this effort, our process on how we collected for the, what our is called our three twenty report, that is our um enrollment to the state, as well as understanding that as we move forward with skip, we really have to make sure that our data is clean and that we are capturing everything we can in order to improve our funding. So with that, I'd like to improve uh recommend uh Dr. Deborah Ludford to step forward into the Zoom podium and um she has the results of the findings of her report that she's been working on for uh with our staff for quite a while. I also want to point out that our uh lead researcher, uh associate vice chancellor Francisco Herrera is in the audience and he, of course, uh worked head and half with Deborah, um in case we want to ask him any questions. So Deborah, thank you so much for being here tonight.
And just before Deborah um starts her presentation, at the last meeting, special meeting that we had, which was the um academy that we looked at, enrollment academy, um we discussed that we weren't providing everything to the board in that meeting. This is another component of our approach to um improving enrollment. So, thank you, Deborah.
Well, good evening, I'm bored. Um, I'm sure there's an audience hello to you as well and and members of of all the staff that is present in the community. Um, the first thing I'd like to do is ask my presentation be uh brought up, and then I will run through uh the update. Hey, thank you so much. Um, I was engaged in in uh twenty twenty-one um to look at the integrity of your data. And um I believe uh la- my last report to you was in April of twenty-one um to uh give you an update as to where we were and what we had found. And so tonight, my purpose is to take us a little further along that journey and answer any questions uh you might have. I have uh completed that as well as we've done some follow-on work that I think is probably, I'm hoping, been extremely valuable to to the district. Next slide. Um, just a little reminder about the project and what it was. Um, it's its purpose was to examine the integrity of your data and look most specifically at the processes uh that are used to collect that data with the eye towards optimizing your student success and verifying it's alignment with a student-centered funding formula um in order to improve your decision-making and 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 maximize your funding opportunities. So it's kind of a a double-edged uh uh approach. Uh, out of that um project, we had fifteen MIS processes, management information systems, processes that are uh sent to the state. Uh, we documented all of those, um and we also did a detailed what we call a data dictionary. And that defines uh where the data is stored, how it's processed, who's responsible for it, uh and all the rules about that data to make sure that we were getting all of the data um reported. With that, I found twelve gaps and and made thirty recommendations uh that were district-wide. And I also uh made twenty-eight departmental uh recommendations that I came across in the process to improve efficiency and effect effectiveness um at at the departmental level. Next slide. So this is, and you uh may have remembered this from the board meeting, for those of you that were on the board at that time may remember this. Uh, this is is what I talked about in that the board, I I went over the dust practices in terms of the lens that I use when I look at institutions um across the state. Um, I looked to the board to set strategy and also establish board policy and administrative procedure around data usage and management. Um, that is your role and and that is what uh will strengthen your institution. Operationally, your staff has some roles to play, and in the center is probably the crux of the way we look at an institution when we look at the data integrity. We look at, we look at how are the end users supplying the data uh and make sure that's effective and efficient. Um, we look at at the IT processes, they process the data. The one thing about that is is that your technology staff can't tell you if it's right. They can just tell you if it's there. Um, and so they collect it, get it prepared. And then um you should have a data quality, I call it an analyst, um a function of some sort where the data is validated and the processes are in uh regularly reviewed. Um, I'm proud to say that Peralta has put that in place under Francisco's le- leadership. Um, and then institutional research analyzes that data and prepares it for use in 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 analysis and decision-making, hopefully both at the local level, at the campuses, and also with you, the board. Next, um, well, I wanted to point out in the lower right corner, I have written an extensive paper uh about this in consultation with uh FICMA. And it has been published uh at that link, if you would like to read uh more about uh of this particular uh philosophy uh and how it affects uh what we do, feel free, but um that is available for yours. It's publicly viewable. Next slide. So what did I, what have I seen at Peralta? Number one, I believe you are becoming a data-focused institution. Um, I heard faction figures in some of your reporting tonight. Um, and I'm thrilled to see that transformation because uh when I arrived, uh that was not a focus, uh at least that I could observe. And I really think you've made, um, you've sense, uh the through this process, we've sensitized uh the staff to that data focus and making sure uh uh things are are moving in that direction. You are sharing common systems across the district, probably one of the best models of it that I've seen. Um, and that's fantastic because that benefits your students. It means they don't have to, uh if they enter, if they visit or or excuse me, enroll in more than one of your institutions, uh it's all the same, it looks the same, it feels the same. They're not um, they're not unique and different, and that is a really uh strong when you're dealing with students uh who don't have a lot of time to do things different ways at different institutions. You're using common forms and coding processes across the district, and you're coordinating that. A lot of leadership in this area, and probably the most beneficial what you're doing for students is you are doing uniform course numbering. Uh, and that is phenomenal. There are very few districts in multi-campus districts in the state that have achieved what you have in that area. So I uh I commend you for that. Um, I've been conducting training, I have one more to go. Um, and what I've been doing in that training is a follow-on to the data integrity project is reviewing the processes with the folks in the department, validating them and going over what should change, what recommendations affect their particular area, and then really training them on what they need to know to move forward. So I've had eight review sessions to review the documents, eight training sessions to sort of move them forward. I did actually two flex day workshops for faculty uh related to the project and their role in data and why they need to be concerned about the skip and and concerned about reporting grades and all those types of things that they're responsible for. And I had, I had really nice turnout. And then I've done five additional training sessions really focused on the preparation of the CCFS three twenty report uh and scheduling and curriculum practices. Um, and hopefully those have uh assisted the institution uh as well in in coming to grips with all of that. What I also have observing is there's a lot of questioning of processes and practices. People who have participated in both the training and and in the interviews that I did as part of the process, I found they've come back to me, many of them, questioning, okay, are we doing it this way? Is this the right way? When I'm conducting the review sessions, they're kind of debating, uh are we doing it the best? Is there something better we can do? So I really feel that it's that that's where I come up with the perception that you're becoming data-focused, because I think they've sensitized to becoming a a data-driven institution. And I see the focus shifting to optimizing your schedules and also if making improvements in your three twenty reporting. Um, I did a small follow-on project about that and and made some recommendations, and I see those uh rapidly moving forward as well. Um, and so I do see some trends and improvements uh occurring. Next slide. Um, some of the pending issues and concerns that that I wanted to share with you um is that, you know, we need to continue to monitor progress on on the recommendations. They're not all done. Uh, many of them are, some are done, some are well along the way. Um, but I do think that it just, it just needs to continue to be monitored as it has been. I did do, um, as you know, there was an additional area of reporting that came about this last year in twenty-two uh called credit for prior learning related to your advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and those types of programs. Um, and I have completed, uh I will be completing uh documenting that process of collection uh and making sure that it's um optimal. Um, I think we should continue the training on reporting, uh report data collection processes and best practices that we have done and I have supplied the district, all of the materials that I have used in both the departmental and in the general training have been made available to the institution. Uh, they are your property and they should be all along with the process maps and the data dictionary has all been provided and should be, you know, regularly updated it, so you don't lose the momentum about making sure that you're tending to your data. Um, we need to develop and implement um in your non-credit distance education uh courses. The state has um uh a formula that I find quite absurd, but it is what it is. Uh, but it is uh difficult, and it involves the faculty and what they do in their distance education arena uh in non-credit. And um we need to develop and implement uh a collection and reporting process for that. Uh, we started on it, um it's, and it's been made in my report um subsequent. Continue researching, training, and implementing um best practices in three twenty preparation. I think you've made a lot of headway. Uh, working with the campuses, I'm very impressed. Uh, they're very diligent and and uh the district institutional research group is making available some uh reports and things that can help them in that process, and I think um it's something that needs to be ironed out still, but it 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 needs to continue. Um, and then continue the ongoing in inquiry about the best ways to to collect and report data. One of the areas there's a lot of confusion in is the lab lecture hours, so we need to continue to finish that up. And then we did review and document the AB five forty data collection processes and make sure those are uh are correct. As you know, much of your skip funding comes from uh AB five forty uh students, and then perform the annual process and data map review uh for updates. Next slide. So what should the board be doing to assist? Well, uh, understand your role in data governance and and continue to set strategy and policy uh as you have been doing. understand your role in data governance and continue to set strategy and policy as you have been doing. Lead a culture change of tending to the data by using data in your decision-making publicly and establish a culture of data-driven decision-making. Foster a culture of trust, promote leadership in solutions and don't succumb to the blame game. Move the organization towards action based on an analysis and don't avoid the analysis paralysis. Let's keep this ship moving. It's moving well now and needs to continue. Focus on optimizing the student experience in everything you decide. Approve and support the data governance policy that I believe is coming forth or if it hasn't already. And then provide the resources to, as needed, to accomplish those recommendations that we made around data quality and ask lots of policy and strategy questions along the way. Next slide. Any discussions or questions for me?
Colleagues, do we have any questions or discussions? Thank you so much for the presentation. Anybody? Go ahead, VP Quinlan.
So I find myself having questions, but right now the inability to frame those questions based on, I don't know if there's a way to get some of this data and the way, the way you're looking at it as opposed to just kind of outlining the process of the changes we have to make in the way we look at it. Does that make sense?
Okay, I'm not understanding. I apologize.
No, that's, that's all right. So in looking at a report like this, it's hard for me, and I don't know if the other board members suffered from this at all, but to look at this report without an example of how data is analyzed and used to drive policy around certain issues without some kind of an example of where we maybe misunderstood it or used it incorrectly and what the changes are, how we use it correctly or how we collect it correctly.
Okay, so my recommendation's focus on how you should collect it correctly. That is, is the crux of the report. I did not cite specific examples, although I heard specific examples of decision-making without some data to back it up, but I don't normally disclose those. I just make general recommendations about how I think you can collect and report the data better so that you can maximize your funding and better serve students. I think I'm answering your question, but I'm not quite sure.
So I'm a believer, I'm a big believer in making mistakes is a good thing, as long as you're willing to learn from those mistakes. And I'm not asking to say this person did this wrong or this happened wrong, but just being able to recognize the mistakes so that when we're looking at the data, we understand how we're going to draw conclusions from that and if that's a correct, what we're being asked to do. Let's see, I'm stating this very poorly.
Okay, I think I understand. So what my response to you would be is that I've seen numerous examples of inquiries by staff. I don't know whether they have been board-driven or administration-driven or the staff themselves. Inquiries about the best way to do things and the best way to report that data. And what I'm telling you is I am seeing everyone really getting into the details of how to do it better and then changing their practices. I'm observing that. I cannot say, because I haven't attended your board meetings on a regular basis, that I could answer, is the board doing it well or not well? That is in there. I did not get into that type of an analysis. Would be happy to if you'd like to engage that. I don't know, I just observed you working with Dr. Benjamin. Looks to me as if you are looking at data, right? You're using a survey to make updates and so forth, information that you want in the next chapter. If you're exercising that type of inquiry from your constituents and then acting on that and doing the best that you can with that information, that's what's expected of the board.
Maybe I can help a little bit, Trustee Quinlan. There are several metrics that the system uses in their analysis of the SCIF. One of them is the number of certificates, you know, all of that. And so garbage in, garbage out. So they also look at the amount of time. So in counseling, for example, we have a software program where we input the number of hours that we work with students. That data is collected in a summative manner and submitted to the state. We can get daily attendance from that information, which then equates into dollars that we received. If a clerk does not input that information into the system, it may not be a big deal, but you add that up year in and year out. It adds up. So one of the things that Deborah did initially in the first report that she, she provided to the board and to staff, because I got an update on this, is she talked to those individuals that do that keying in to explain to them why it's important that you entered that information in because it trickles up and then we get dollars based upon that. And when she presented that to us, it was like an aha moment, she said, for them to see. So this is how my actions that I do on a daily basis, which is just collecting hours and putting them in the system, if I don't do that and I'm not the only one, if it doesn't happen across the district, then those funds never get collected because the data was never entered in. So when she says data integrity, that's what she's talking about, is how does that data come into the system? Who puts it in? How is it collected? And then how does that go through our system and then collect it in state reporting data, which then gets turned around and that is how we get our apportionment. So it's detailed work. It's not sexy and what she's provided to you is kind of an overview of where we are in that process. We have some diligent employees that have been working on this for over a year since 2021. And I think we want, I want you to recognize that that's going on, not to get into the weeds of, you know, exactly what everybody's doing, but to understand that all of that relates to our budgeting. And so as we talked about earlier with the chancellor's search, somebody needs to understand how that's done. Because when it doesn't work, you can bring in students, but if you don't enter the information into the system, you aren't going to get the results that you want from your efforts. So it's kind of a big approach overview that Deborah is providing. But that's an example of one, just one component of the area that she's been working with, with our staff.
So to me, she's describing a very mechanical process.
It's a mechanical process. If it works, it's not a mechanical process.
Try to put the wrong parts together, not too much.
Exactly. And so that's what we've been doing is trying to get the right parts into the system so that we can get the results on the other side. Did that help a little bit?
Yes, my concern was something outside of the realm of this presentation is what I came to understand. What I was concerned with is how do we take the data that's being generated and use that to drive our decision-making process or the decision-making processes in colleges and what we're offering, not outside of what we're just reporting, but how we use that data to make decisions.
So let me give you another example. We collected data from one of our colleges and we had a trend analysis that usually we get X amount of FTES based upon the number of hours that students go to the library, go to tutoring, you know, all of those instructional areas that are overseen by faculty but are collected. And we found, wow, how come this last year it went from up here down to here? What happened to that data? And that happened not only at the college, but it also happened at doing Francisco, when we were doing the research and presenting the report to the state. The decision was we need to improve that process because it was a mechanical process. Someone had changed, someone had left out of the instructional researcher's office that gathered that information, put it together. And so we came up with another option for doing that because of it. That's a decision, how we use that information to then turn around and make a decision that we can't just leave it up to one person. We have to have some kind of systematic approach in gathering that. Luckily, we were able to contact the state office and they gave us credits for that missing data which changed, the FTES went up. And I'm not sure exactly how much Dr. Joker and Dr. Francisco Herrera, you know which project I'm talking about. So, but again, that's how we use that data to be able to make decisions based upon our actions.
Thank you.
And maybe I'll just provide another context in, as Deborah had said, in twenty-one, she did a presentation. And, you know, as a result of ACCG, CJC and all the problems that we had had, we had come to the realization that we could not trust our data, which is really what gave rise to Cambridge West and all of the different things that she had done as it related to this. If you look back to the presentation, I'm just going to underscore four things that she did in her gap analysis findings, Lewis. One, that staff turnover has resulted in loss of institutional memory and process optimization. This is stuff that you know because you've been here. Manual processes and shadow systems are prevalent due to lack of access and training, lack of trust in the data because staff not fully involved in data validation. And culture, which in today's presentation, she said that there is a difference now, but the culture here had been, does not emphasize data accuracy and usage in decision-making. And we are now, from her current analysis, we are in a different, we are in a different place. So she's done amazing things. I do have a question for you, Deborah, though. So you have a focus on CCFS three twenty and I don't recall that being in your initial gap analysis findings as being an issue. Is there, and you have, you're bettering the process is what I'm seeing. And so I guess my question is, were there consequences or ramifications for the way that we were doing it before incorrectly or not as efficiently? Why the shift to bettering the process?
So you're focusing on the three twenty, right?
The CCFS three twenty, yes.
Right, okay. So what happened with the three twenty is you had the departure of a couple of individuals, which was pointed out in the initial, that really slowed, that left with a lot of institutional knowledge. And then it was turned over to Dr. Herrera and his team to try and pick up the pieces. And so I came in to look at that process as a result of that departure and the confusion because of the work I had previously done and because in the initial study, I did identify the data that is used for the three twenty as well as in the MIS reporting processes in the detail. And so I did a follow-on work for you and identified the areas in the three twenty that I thought you needed to make some changes to. And I just presented that to the chancellor and her staff this week, actually, to give them food for thought, focusing not so much on the Student Center funding formula, but really on the three twenty preparation and processes. And made some recommendations regarding that. I don't know if Dr. Jackson shared that with you yet or not, but it is, there are, I believe, I had nine recommendations for some changes in that process as well. And again, it was, the reason for that was a sort of a follow-on because I said, your departure of people is really hurting your ability to make sure that data is consistently supplied and processed properly. So I did do some additional work and that's where, that's why I put those comments in there tonight.
And I'll just say that I think that that's a wonderful example, right? Because it can't be dependent, what we do cannot be dependent on individuals. We have to make sure that we have an infrastructure that's got the policies and the procedures so that when people leave, we're not in a mess. Yeah, so that's, again, excellent, excellent work. And I guess my last question is, we're not quite done with implementations, as you had said. You're not going away, right? You're going to be here for a little while?
I'm not going away.
Fantastic, okay.
No, you saw the follow-on items that I have. Many of those are related to the recommendations and things that I can continue to assist Dr. Herrera and his team with and getting some things in place. Those were pretty specific examples, which is why I say to you, we're getting into the weeds now. We've kind of dealt with some of the bigger issues and brought those to light and now we're getting into the narrower, narrower, narrower issues and trying to get those resolved. And yes, I will continue to be at your service as needed.
And we chose not to bring the three twenty report. We still have another report. Thank you for being patient with them, with us tonight, because we try not to do more than two reports. That isn't always possible and, you know, the time starts to get away from us. And we have one more, which is on the other post-employment benefits. But Deborah did provide that information to us and we did talk about finishing up and continuing that training and putting that training that she's provided in such a way that it's carried on through the Professional Development and Learning Center, the PDLC, which we implemented in February, February first of this year. And I believe we had over two hundred individuals in that time that have received training, individuals within the district. So we want to train the trainer and the group that she's working with. We have that expertise. Let's use that because it helps. And as teachers, you know, you are the subject matter expert when you teach it over and over again. So that becomes part of, you know, our ongoing landscape with our employees. So just to give you a kind of close the loop on that.
Trustee, on us?
I just have a really quick question just for the trustees. I realize that whenever we discuss data or data integrity, everybody's very, very interested. And I'm just wondering, even though Dr. Benjamin isn't here any longer, should we send a quick note to possibly in the qualities that a chancellor should be data-driven as well? And just have that in there so we ensure that it's all.
I can let her know.
Maybe just a quick one.
Good point. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. My best wishes to you.
Thank you. Okay.
Might we take a three-minute stand and stretch break?
That's good.
Vincent, if you and David want to get ready so that when we come back from the break, we can hop right into your presentation?
Like really three?
Yep.
Thanks.
Sasha, you want to bring up the the presentation?
Referring to open?
Yeah, we have the presentation five point one, then we have the informational and then we have the action item and we're going to take it in that order. So we bring up the presentation as soon as the board gets back and gives me the thumbs up, I'll turn it over to Bascom.
You got it.
Okay. So I said, I don't know, about eight times and kept asking.
I was just wondering, I tried, I didn't know if you.
We'll be the judge.
Good question.
I mean, there was a theory about why we did. And it was that not the. Right? And it seems to me we lost the bargain, but I'm not sure. And I don't know how badly we lost the bargain. I mean, moving forward, it's like we really don't lose.
There's a lot of dollars on it. I think there's been a lot of intervening events since.
Sure.
You know, and we.
I'm just trying to figure out how badly this group.
Yeah, we 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 thought that we would be able to actually use that to do that. And collect the data and have some reliance upon that data. It would be overwhelming.
There's money going in and out of the drugs.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
There's been answers that have been redone.
Staff person that, you know, had been involved in at least in a bit of years. And then we lost that staff person and there was data that, you know, we couldn't.
There's mixed million dollars of critical questions.
Well, it's 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 a good question.
It's a learning question. I don't know, but it helps to wind our way out of the.
Right, I think moving forward, yeah. And I also think that another thing to keep in mind, I think you're right that you were looking at this, you know, at this amount that was going to go of payments that was going to go up quickly. One of the factors is in right medical costs is is not escalate as we guess that as folks thought. And I think that's one of the things that we talked a lot about, you know, about the basket. We talked about a lot of the payment plan, but the.
And and early on, we had running out of spending. Exactly. And then a note that when we start paying, it's not easy. And I think I think we were a while. Oh, yeah, I think something better as you get it down fifty million dollars.
Yeah. We didn't have. We, I mean, we, it's a year on part of the life, right? But then.
No, we do now. We, hang on, we said. You know, you know, go on. Oh, well, yeah, we did that. We can use another.
Okay, let's go ahead and come back, folks.
Very well.
Right, and any of the budget is.
So we'll get started. I I just wanted to take a minute to introduce our bond municipal advisors, Bascom, Macarley, Berry and Company. And this evening, I believe it's going to be a tag team with Vincent MacCarley is going to start out. And then and you've met Vincent before and David, they've been back. And David Olson will carry the book. And if there's any questions about this, and it is extremely important, new trustees, if you have any questions about this, to answer those now or if you have some in the future to to let us know. There's a lot of things that go back and forth, which I think this presentation will address. We've worked on it together for at least three meetings, I think, back and forth. So I I think this will, we tried to take into account that we do have individuals that have been here as well as new individuals. So with that, I will turn it over to Vincent and to David.
Great, thank you, Chancellor. Again, I'm Vincent MacCarley with Dr. MacCarley Berry and David Olson, my colleague. Some of this will be rehashed for some of the board members and some of it will be new. It's a somewhat complex subject, and so it actually takes some time to grasp it all. And so feel free to ask questions. And even afterwards, after today's presentation, if you have questions, please channel through the through the chancellor and we'll respond to them. Because again, it takes a little time to grasp it all. And there's no embarrassment behind that. I'm going to let David start off with the with the presentation, basically to provide some background.
Great, thanks, Vince. The I'm going to start out by making three points and then I'm going to talk through. Just give it, give some of the 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 background on the financing, going back to two thousand and five. And we'll turn it back over to Vincent to talk about what the plan is for for this year and and moving ahead. But the first thing I wanted to do is thank you. This is the fourth year in a row that we've developed the 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 O P A bond payment plan with staff and that we presented it to the board. And we think the process has been a very productive one and a very healthy one. So everybody learns a little bit more the more times we go through it. And, you know, it becomes more aware of some of the trade offs that that are being made and and things like that. So we appreciate that. That should be up until right now.
I think Sasha's running it.
Okay, great, next slide, please. Thank you.
Make your like these.
All right, thank you very much. So second thing I wanted to do is is define a few terms. The other other post employment benefits that was agreed to twenty years ago, thirty years ago, forty years ago, with employees at that time to provide benefits after they retire. So the first thing is that the benefits. The second term is the O P A benefit payments. Those are the payments being made now to make good on those agreements. Those payments are being made from trust one. The the third term is O P A bond payments. And the O P A bond payments are being made to investors from a variety of sources of funds, but guaranteed by the district's general fund. And those are being made today. So the O P A benefit payments are coming from trust one to pay for the benefits to retired employees. And the bond payments are coming from a variety of sources to pay the bonds that were issued to fund trust one originally. The third thing I wanted to do is is to share some good news. Next slide. The, you know, it's 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 a complicated system, but it but it's working and delivering some results, right? Obviously, we are been able to make benefit payments on a regular basis for the past almost twenty years that O P A trust one is fully funded, which means that an actuary took a look at the at the at the assets in trust one and determined that they would be sufficient to pay to pay benefit payments, not only next year, obviously, but into the future till they're till they end. The investment returns have been strong and are expected to remain strong. That's one of the risks in the transaction is is the investment return. So far, they've been good and they continue to be good through volatile markets. And the last one is that this annual review process, as I started out by saying, it really has been helpful in assisting assisting to monitor the program and developing strategies to address future concerns before they become critical. So this year, we've identified some issues that need to be addressed, but there are issues that need to be addressed over the next four or five years. They're not issues that we're facing this year. And I think this annual process has been very helpful in in terms of doing that. Next slide. Now I'm going through a little bit, going to go through a little bit more quickly because this is the 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 background on that. But you can slow me down and and ask questions if you want. But the the issue was that was that the district faced in the early two thousands was that the cost of providing these benefits that you had agreed to was going up rapidly and was expected to continue to go up very rap rapidly. The district wanted to keep its agreement with these employees. And so what the the option that was selected was that a bond issue would be done. And you use the proceeds of that bond issue to fund trust one that would pay the future benefits. And the district would take over the responsibility to pay the bonds. They'd be paid over the same amount of time, but the escalation on the bond payment payments would be known and predictable and more gradual than what was expected to be the trend on the medical costs. So that made sense because it provided for the existing obligation and it swapped out for this payment that the district determined to be affordable. Between two thousand and five, two thousand and nineteen, right? Rocky Road, Great Recession, all these types of things going on in a response of the the district to each of the changes. At a certain point, you were putting money back in trust one. So there were a lot of things going on. The program management got very complicated. And in two thousand and nineteen, we came in, did a review, reported back to the district, wanted to simplify the process, give it more transparency, look more long term rather than respond each year. So that's part of what's with this, what this payment, what what this presentation is is about. Next slide.
And one key point is that this affects basically employees that were hired prior to July of two thousand and four. And so that's the pool of employees that we're talking about that fall under this benefit plan.
Okay, so the next slide.
If I could.
Yes.
Make sure that when you talk about the cap of the quarter, July one of two thousand and four, it's not the whole year of two thousand and four.
Correct. Thank you. The the district ratified the the kind of choices and and put in this resolution nineteen twenty forty four and made official the some of the processes we talked about for more transparency. This annual report had to determine whether there was a surplus in trust one, a variety of other things. So that that was put in place in 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 two thousand and nineteen, twenty. And that's we've been making the report ever since. Next slide. The amount of bonds outstanding is is listed there. It's about two hundred and forty million dollars in in outstanding principal amount. If you wanted to pay those down today, there are complications to doing that as well. But the the cut from a cost basis would be about two hundred and forty million dollars. Next slide. Payments go through two thousand and forty nine. They escalate gradually over time. We pay off one financing in two thousand and thirty one, thirty two. So they'll drop a little bit after that, but the payments are about in the fifteen, sixteen, seventeen million dollar range over the next few years. So that's what we're trying to figure out how to how to get those payments made. Next slide. We pay them from four four sources of funds, what we've called the dedicated O P A appropriation. That's an amount equal to a seven and a half percent payroll, what what a seven and a half payroll tax would bring in. Then we roll down to a supplemental O P A appropriation. That's an additional amount of of the general fund that can go to making bond payments. Put that forward to the extent it's affordable. Draws from trust one, we're allowed to make draws for where the district is allowed to make draws from trust one. If the that fund is overfunded, can't make draws if it's not, can only use it to pay down principal. And then the last one is draws from this O P A special reserve fund, which I think has three point six million dollars in it now. It it'll be good if it had a little bit more in it, but it has three point six million dollars now. Next slide. The budgeting strategy, is that where you're going to take over? Was this my last slide?
Your last slide.
All right, fantastic. So the budgeting strategy is is just what I described, kind of a waterfall from this dedicated O P A appropriation. Never want to be go below that amount. That's about six point seven million dollars. Now, we use the supplemental appropriation to the extent we can and we can afford it, right? There's obviously each year, there's budget pressures on the district. Draws from trust one, only to the extent there's surpluses. And then the O P A reserve in the event that that that's necessary as a last resort. So it's the the plan has been put in place, the 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 basic parameters. And we discuss each year how those fit together into making the next year's payment and how that affects the payments after that. So move to Vince.
Next slide on ten. We basically formalized the process and we did this back in two thousand and nineteen under resolution unanimously adopted by the board. And basically, we look to a supplemental actuarial report, which shows what the liability is for benefits. As well, we look at the the investment report that is provided by the retirement board. And those retirement funds are outside managed, but again, under direction of the retirement board. And based off of recent review from two thousand and twenty two, we show a forty four million dollar surplus. Again, looking at the actuarial liability versus the assets within the investment fund, which is trust one. And again, this is a process that we formalize via the resolution and will revisit each year. Next slide. On page eleven, you'll basically see assets under this middle column for trust one and showing you a historical trend line of what those assets have been. To the left of that, you'll see what the accrued liability is. And then to the right, you'll see what the determined surplus has been each year. And again, those numbers will fluctuate as we go forward because it's somewhat determined by the performance that occurs within the trusts. And that can fluctuate, as you know, within the marketplace. And so that's one of the cautions within our planning process. Next slide. So each year, within this process, we put together in conjunction with the district staff, a ten year plan, a repayment plan. It's not locked in stone, but it's something to guide us as we go forward. And then we can make adjustments based off of new information that is available to us. And so that is the understanding in terms of how we develop that ten year plan. And again, those variables will change as we go forward. But it allows us, it forces us to review that, bring it to the board so that everyone is informed about what the status is going forward. So as Dave mentioned, we hopefully don't become an item where it becomes critical in our process. Next slide. David talked about the actual bond payments and this basically breaks those down. At the bottom, you see the total of sixteen million, five hundred, which is the payment that is due on a fiscal year basis. And as you go down this this table, you'll see the individual components to that, including the principal on the bonds, the variable interest rate, the net swap payment, letter credit fee, et cetera, for the different types of bonds that have been issued at various points in time and the restructuring or refundings that have occurred. Next slide. In terms of the payment for twenty three, twenty four, the O P A bond payment, Dave went through a number of different sort potential sources for that and outlined what they mean and what the underlying sources of those are. For twenty three, twenty four, we're looking at the dedicated O P A appropriation of six point seven million. And we're looking at a draw from trust one of nine point eight million for the total of the sixteen million, five hundred. On page fifteen, next slide. As I mentioned, this would be the ten year plan adjusted from last year going forward. In previous years, we were looking at roughly a million dollar increase each year relative to to the general fund. As earlier discussed, it's always responsible to look back and see what type of adjustments need to be made based off of current resources and the information that we have. And so here we see an adjustment relative to the draws from trust one. We also see not making draws from the O P A reserve. And as Dave mentioned, at the moment, at least as of the end of two thousand and twenty two, we had a little bit of over three million dollars in that fund. We had a little bit of over three million dollars in that fund. And it's always appropriate to have a little bit of reserve there. As you can see in the outer years, there's going to need to be further adjustments made. And we'll need to revisit those to make sure that our that our repayment schedule stays on on track. Next page. Basically, we have some time sensitive items that we've put in place as a result of the resolution from two thousand nineteen. On Thursday of this week, there will be a presentation made to the retirement board. Again, bringing them up to speed relative to the presentation of tonight. On or before June fifth, the district will formally make a request for transfer of funds from trust one. On or before July fifth. The deposit needs to be made to the trustee for the payment of the bonds. And the payment of the bonds to the investors is paid out by the trustee on August fifth. Later this summer and in in the fall, we will again reconvene for purposes of again mapping out. Our strategy for addressing some of those outer years that we've talked about. And some of those items will start to become apparent as we look at. Some of the other items that we'll discuss this evening. And with that, any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Bill, then Alina, then Louis.
First of all, I'd like to say that this is the an excellent report. It's the best written report that I've seen in eighteen years on the OPEB.
Thank you.
And it's something that especially our new trustees need to. Take home and memorize because it is an order of magnitude that is kind of off the charts. As they showed in the report, the OPEB bonds outstanding right now are two hundred and thirty nine million, three hundred thousand. We started off with a hundred and fifty million. With the target at that point in time was thirty years to pay off the hundred and fifty million. And instead of paying it off. In half that time. We've gone up as tremendous amount. And these gentlemen have a. Real charge against them, for example. The ten year sweep is a, we all totally agree that that's the way it should be. But if you look at the fifth of August of two thousand twenty five, two years from now. We have bonds coming to thirty five million, three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. There's no way we can pay that. In one month's sum. That's twenty two percent. Our our annual revenue for the district is a hundred and hundred and. A hundred and fifty nine million. And that. Looking thirty five million is twenty two percent. Just for this one element. In two years. It's doing two years, it's the fifth of August of two thousand twenty five. Now. In addition to what the again, the big number of dollars going out. Over the course of the last. Three years, we've averaged about eight million a year. Out of trust one, just paying the medical costs. And they're going up. Well, I shouldn't say that, shouldn't say that. Where ours is going down because of some recent negotiations that our good chancellor has gone into. But in a in the overall sense, medical costs in the country are going up dramatically. We also have to, you talk about the. Surplus, and I agree with the surplus that it is right now. But these are on projections. You mentioned that each year you're going to have to take a look at it, because it's going to vary. And my one concern, because there's so much legal involved here. Unbelievable legally involved. The retirement board, for example, doesn't come under the board. Trustees does not come under the chancellor. And it's separate. One of the reasons is that you. The standard law, and you all know this, but the standard law is that you don't take. Government funds and invest it in other than. Very treasury paper, basically. This is an exception to that. But with that exception, there are multitude of laws, guidelines, structures, or sites. And so we've got to make sure that when we do things like the projections, that they're. Reasonably well done and codified. In a matter of record every year that you went through this process, bang, went through this process, bang. And we also have to recognize that. And you kind of mentioned this, we should not have, we being the district should not have gone into that level of healthcare in the first place. But we did. I shouldn't say we, they did. But right now, that is a part of the compensation for that group of people. That is their compensation for work that they did here, whether we like it or not. And so we we don't want to take it, look at it as if that. All is all caused because of this group of people and that absolutely is not the case. Now, one last thing that I'll shut up here. The surplus. The use of the money and the surplus. Is because there's a captive group, in other words, there's a beginning and an end. And any monies in the trust fund. If we hadn't put the language in that I put forth, the use of to pay off bonds. The government would have taken it. At least at that time, I don't know what they do now, but anyway, that was the word that we were getting that. The government would have taken it. And so anyway, once you've defined it, the language though legally is. The funds are not needed as projected and will never be needed. Or that and never will be needed. Gives a few headaches to people. And I think we need to come up with some language. That would address that saying, if in fact. There's a deficit. If we had like a market crash and whatever. That we'd have to have language in there that would say that. The district is going to come up with the funds to make the. And hold to the degree they took money out in the first place. Does that seem too hard to you? Does that make sense?
I I understand the the concept, I I can't comment on. The viability of it and the policy of it, yes.
Well, no, it's going to be, obviously, whatever language is in there and whatever's going to be. Blessed by the attorneys involved, but. That's the only thing I see and hear other than. My colleagues recognizing that we have a huge, huge issue here. And that one of the learning things from it is that when we have something that sounds great from the standpoint of benefit. Run the numbers. Run the numbers and run the numbers out over time. Not just today, what are the what are the possibilities of whatever we're involved in? And so that we don't get into a position where we have two years from now, twenty two percent of our current. Revenues and actually it's. Well, I don't want to get into that, it's it's, I pointed out because it's a, it's major. It's not a minor blip. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and go to VP Quinlan, Alina, and then trustee Gutsalupito, then trustee Reese.
So just speaking frankly and clearly, this scares the hell out of me.
My apologies.
Thank you.
Hannah, we see you over here all the way.
So yeah, thank you for this report. I have a couple of questions. I just heard trustee Whitro said there's, I think it's a thirty five million in twenty twenty five. Where do I see that? Where do I find that number here? Because I see the bullet point.
It it's actually in twenty five, you have sixteen point five million. If if you look at the estimated payments under that second column on page fifteen. Yeah, so so I I think. Yeah, so so maybe in talking about the accumulated value. Possibly what trustee with with, but for June thirty of two thousand twenty five, you're looking at sixteen point five million.
Paper that I got shows thirty five million.
Okay, all right.
I think it could be a different report, but anyway, it shows thirty five million.
Okay.
Yeah, your attention should be on page fifteen.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at. Okay, so then I. How do you determine how much of the surplus is used? Because I I see in that page fifteen that you have draws from trust one, that total forty four million, which I think is the current surplus. Right? So we're just planning for the year that we're in. It goes up and down. But this is, and it ends, it it ends in twenty twenty eight because we reached forty four million, is that right?
That's correct, that's correct. So so this basic table reflects using over time. That full surplus as we know it today. And bear in mind that that the calculation of the surplus each year is going to change, either up or 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 down. Based off of what the draws have been. Plus or minus what the performance has been of the fund.
I guess because I'm looking at the what the surplus was in two thousand nineteen, it was seventeen million. It was in twenty twenty one, it was seventy two million. So how do we plan? For, I guess, how do I, how do we get to the sum total if trust one is constantly changing? And then I look over at other potential sources of revenue and think, is that going to have to change?
Yes, and and yes, and and that's part of part of the challenge. And one of the items, it's in the footnotes that we didn't go into in detail here is that the. The Gatsby calculation also changed, so that's the reason why you see that huge fluctuation in in that one year. So there was a Gatsby accounting rule change that occurred in in that particular year.
So then I guess my two two more questions, which is how do we avoid going into a deficit? In that fund, given the the change in valuation. Where like trustee Whitro just said, where we'd have to pull money from reserves and then. My last question is, how do you? Do we know what those other potential sources of revenue are? I see there's a meeting in the summer this year, but it seems like. What 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 could that be?
I I'll I'll say that there are a number of specific ideas from as 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 simple as the. Right, the healthcare costs may produce a bigger surplus in trust one. But there are other specific ideas that are not fleshed out to the extent that I'm comfortable sharing them at this point.
Those will be talked about this summer.
Yeah, definitely.
And then how do you, how do we avoid going into a deficit? I mean, is that a real threat for the trust one?
Well, one, we we need to be moderate relative to the draws from trust one. And we ongoingly review the investment reports that are provided by the retirement board. At least on a quarterly basis, we we don't wait till the full year just to see where where we are. And we try, again, from the process that we put in place, we try to plan in advance. So even on a short term basis, we're looking at. The June thirty of two thousand twenty two data to make this decision. A new report will come out in July, August, basically updating for. June thirty of two thousand twenty three, and we'll start the process again for next year's planning based off of that.
I can be scared now?
Yes.
So when I look at column three. That looks to me like based on our best planning, those are, that's income we're going to have to come from out of our general fund.
Yes.
Yes. Page fifteen again. Though column three.
The supplemental OPEB.
So that, you know, just doing rough calculations to give people an idea how that's going to impact our college. Being very conservative in my calculations. Over that period, that twenty eight million dollars means at least eighty six thousand seats of education that we won't be able to offer. And at that point, I I just feel like our mission has been corrupted. That that's a lot of education that we aren't going to be able to offer. And then if we go over to the other potential sources. If if we're looking at general fund for them, we're going to be out of business. And I I don't hear any sense of panic here, but I'll provide it.
I I I think concern is more appropriate versus panic. I I think there, obviously, this is a a large obligation. And we're hopeful that collectively through some creative thinking and strategy. That we can work through this and in a manageable way. So that it will not be as maybe as painful as what. You described. That's what our 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 hope is and with, you know, obviously, the leadership of of the district. You know, chancellor and and our staff, we can get there, but there'll be some tough choices to be made, clearly.
And and just to to put it into context. These are benefits to a population that is shrinking. These are individuals that retired before two thousand four. And you've heard the presentations by, you know, Pro.
Actually, they were employed before two thousand.
Excuse me. Employed employed before two thousand four. So we're already taking some action. We first of all have established the the trust fund, which wasn't there before. We're just picking it straight out of general fund. That happened years ago when I think. Vincent and David came on and Barclay came on. That was one thing. The other thing that we've done and committed to the board and we've been able to sustain that. Is put money in a trust fund. It is not an irrevocable trust, because if we need to use that money for other things. We wanted to keep that. We could, the board could make it a irrevocable trust that would guarantee that. That those are options, pros and cons for each of those. And we've taken the steps last year to reduce our cost. And those are also included in our calculations that go towards that end. We haven't realized that because we only implemented it at the beginning of this year under Sisk. But we do have an actuarial study that shows that we will be getting some money from that, which would help to offset some of these costs. So it's a, it's a multi-pronged approach, not just a a single that we're going to take it out of trust one. And then the board made the commitment that we would put a million dollars in that every year, which we've been able to do also. So there's, like I said, multiple ways of of doing this. It it there isn't a. Next year to panic that, you know. Oh, my God, we're not going to be able to move forward. We have some time. We have some strategies. We're implementing those strategies. But it is still, it's a, it's a lot of debt. And so we wanted the board to be aware of that. But I I I don't think we need to panic in that those sections that you're talking about, we won't be able to offer. Will not be next year. We have some time, we have some funds that are already. Pre-determined, as you see on the chart, but we do need to make some some hard choices going forward. And those are policy choices. Um, and those are policy choices that the board has to make. So we wanted you to be aware of it. Um, it it doesn't require immediate action, but it will in the near future require some changes to the way we do business.
Chancellor, you're you're talking about trust number two here. Is that what you're talking about?
It's number three though.
Trust number two is um different than obviously trust number one. Trust number one is for employees who are hired. Prior to uh July one of two thousand four. Trust number two is for those after that, and that's the one that uh the district is supposed to be putting a million dollars a year in.
Just to be sure next.
It's it's a separate thing, and I'm not sure we want to get too far into that because it's.
Oh, I think we're all on. Um, I have four questions.
Four or five questions.
Um. Uh, you know. Again, a kind of blessing in disguise, A C C J C, F I C M A T, state chancellor, wanting to take us over, all of those different things. Because before two thousand nineteen, we hadn't been paying this at all, right? And I remember having a very specific conversation with Dan Borstein from the San Jose Mercury, who has been watching the Prolathe Community College District. And had complained relentlessly about how we were kicking the can down the road. And so the obligation that you all see here in this bar graph. And thirty million dollars, forty million dollars, that's always been here, but it wasn't until two thousand nineteen. That we actually had a payment plan. So again, so many things have happened during this short period of time. That did not or got ignored prior to, and I think it's really important for us to call attention to that. So here are my questions. Um. I remember looking at the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen financial audit, and I was looking at twenty forty nine, twenty fifty. And it looked like we had a debt of about thirty nine or forty million at the time. So and now, as I'm looking at the bar graph on page seven, our obligation is gonna be about. Which is still a lot, but it's under twenty. Is that because we're in this payment plan now? Has that affected that? And if you don't know directly, that's okay.
I I I don't have a complete answer for you today, but in 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 part. Uh, your comment about the district making principal payments starting in twenty nineteen is very correct. It has paid off some of its debt uh as a result of that. Uh, additionally, the way the bonds were originally structured in two thousand and five. Some of the bonds were what are called capital appreciation bonds or zero coupon bonds. Whereby uh you don't pay current interest on those bonds whereby the interest gets added to.
That's right.
And so that's the reason why you may see different numbers depend upon how they're being re- re- reflected. And so if you would look at uh again, two thousand and 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 five or one of those earlier years. You'd see a significantly different number than what you see today because we do account for the accretion, the what we call the accretion of the interest on on those bonds.
Okay. Okay, um, a second question. Um, the surplus report, the surplus report was. Done June twenty two, and it was at a hundred and eighty seven million, but it's been a catastrophic year. Do we know whether this catastrophic year has actually changed that? Or again, is it too early to tell um or not enough for you to report out?
From from our latest data, uh. Kudos to retirement board in terms of their in in investment approach. Uh, as of February twenty eighth of this year, uh, it was a hundred and eighty four uh.
Wow.
There, yeah.
Mm hmm. Oh, that's great. Okay, great, great. And then could you speak to the healthcare? Cause I know that you have it here, the healthcare transition that we engaged in. So you said that that's going to be a variable and changing. Do we know at this particular point how much? Our or what the impact will be on our payments, on our obligations as a result of that? Or again, is it a little too early to tell because we're just transitioning?
We we yes, we're we're still transitioning and I'm hopeful that that information or or data, since that's been the.
Yeah.
On the previous. To get captured in the June thirty of twenty twenty three report, actuarial report. I'm not certain of that, but that's that's what what I anticipate.
Right, okay. Um, and I think that. And and the last one, but you don't have to talk about this today. On page fifteen, you talk about other potential sources where we're shifting it from trust one to other potential sources, and then your footnote says. Sources yet to be determined. We'll we'll talk about that at some point soon.
Yeah. Yeah, that that's what we were sort of referring to, you know, later this summer and going into the fall. Um, you know, having some concerted uh, you know, dialogue. First with the, you know, chancellor and and staff in terms of some alternatives that we might be able to, you know, put on the table and then. At the chancellor's direction, we'll bring those back.
And I just want to remind the board that we only moved over to S I S. January first, twenty twenty three. So. We have not realized the potential savings because we paid out. Those costs anticipating that we would be able to start S I S in July one, twenty twenty two. So we haven't caught up to that yet. So those are some of those options, I think, that did and uh. Had mentioned earlier, those other options and 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 Peter also.
Thank you. Um, I'm looking at page fifteen and I'm trying to understand this table a little better. Um. Column one being a year, column two being estimated estimated payment due. That payment. Is just the debt service?
That's correct.
Okay.
If if I can add, one of the reasons is is it's estimated is there associated costs with that? There's a variable rate component to the debt, a a swap that's outstanding, a remarking agency, it's some things that. That changes is why that's labeled estimated if that's what you're getting.
And so then the next five columns are sources to make that payment.
Yes, correct.
And so then we get over total sources. You add those all up and then it's supposed to equalize. All right. Where are the underlying healthcare costs? Uh, reflected in any of this?
They are not. Uh, the healthcare costs are the responsibility of trust one and are paid from trust one. So they're not, they don't have to do with the the bond side of things.
Okay.
They will help to the extent they create a bigger surplus in trust one.
Okay.
Um, that's there'll be more more funds to draw.
So. Um. Those healthcare costs aren't aren't reflected on this table at all. This is just the debt service and. The interest in principle.
Yes, and we we don't imagine that that increases the surplus. The surplus is forty four million and we assume it will be forty four million.
Okay, so roughly, how much money are we paying out of the O P E B funds? On healthcare every year?
Uh, roughly ten or eleven million dollars.
Roughly ten or a million dollar ever, ten or eleven million dollars. Okay, and the reason I'm asking this is that. This looks crazy, like how could we owe this money? But if we didn't have the O P E B trust fund. We'd be paying ten or eleven million dollars out of our general fund for retiree healthcare costs.
Yes.
Okay, so that's an obligation that we've got one way or another. We happen to be paying that cost out of our O P E B funds. And then, but the total O P E B cost is sixteen or seventeen million, and so there's a delta of an additional. Six or seven million dollars, which is financing costs, which is like, this is the debt service.
I will point out that if you look at this chart, the district is essentially paying six point seven million out of its general fund. This year, if you had the O P E B obligation no financing, you'd be paying ten million.
Okay.
So there's i- i- is that a savings or is that a cost? It depends on how you're looking at it.
And as we were talking earlier during the our three minute break. It's not clear kind of how bad this deal was. That is, this is complicated. There are a lot of funds coming in, a lot of funds going out. In two thousand and five, when we first set this up. I remember uh the chancellor's staff saying, look, we made money on this. Let's spend it. And they did. They drew money out of the O P E B fund and they spent it as part of our general expenditures. Um. What's noteworthy for me as a trustee, this isn't my field. Anybody who's watched me over the years is like befuddled by finance. And the thing is, I think for most of us as lay trustees. This isn't our field. We are completely dependent on the chancellor's staff to bring us recommendations. And in this situation, like you're bringing us a plan. I have no expertise to evaluate whether this is a good plan or a bad plan. I have to trust the chancellor. I have to trust the finance team. I have to trust you. And basically, I can vote yes. Because. Who am I to say this is a bad plan? No, we shouldn't do this, or this is a good plan. We should do this. I'm really not in a position to do that. And so it's complicated. And as a board. That's the mess that we're in. The this board eighteen years ago, seventeen years ago, whatever it is. Made a set of decisions and then has since made a set of decisions. Almost all those decisions been predicated on a trust in administrative staff. And our native intelligence and our intuition, but not actually any specific expertise. And so it's a tricky situation. I'll freely admit the votes that I've made on O P E B. Probably the worst votes I ever made early on. Didn't know what I was doing. Basically trusting the finance committee of the board, trusting the chancellor's staff and the experts that the chancellor's staff brought to us. And we continue to do that. We use our best judgment. But frankly, I don't think community colleges should be in this kind of business ever. I think we got in way over our heads. Uh, but again, we did that on the recommendation of the staff. And I don't know if I were doing it again, whether I would have had the wherewithal to go, oh, no, 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 don't do this. So, you know, public as you're watching, yeah, this is complicated, but we're a layboard and we are dependent on staff. Thank you.
And I will say thank you. Thank you for creating this payment plan. Thank you for allowing us to deal with it now instead of saving it for the people later on. And every single time you have come to us, you've come to us with data and information and substantive stuff. Which is probably more than you all got many, many years ago, right? So um at this particular point, just thank you for doing the due diligence.
I'd like to make a comment if I could from.
And and just if I wasn't appreciative enough, I'm very appreciative. When I say we're dependent on staff, like when we get good staffing, amazing, thank you. Uh, when we don't. Well, they're all gone.
I'd like to make a comment on uh trustee Yuan's comment that funds were taken out of trust one to for general obligation things. Uh, first of all, that's illegal. Secondly, though, more than to the point. There was a period of time unbeknownst to the board and a lot of this was unbeknownst to the board. The um finance staff put money into trust one. Because it was making money in the market. That's the money they were pulling out was the money they stuck in there instead of putting it in a. In a um regular cash account, they stuck it in trust one. But we didn't take monies that were trust fund monies. To spend for general obligation things. Never have.
Be pick one on.
So to be clear, the only thing we're approving tonight is the live war to whatever that one is.
That that's that's correct. This is.
We're not being asked to approve this plan tonight.
No, this is just a presentation. Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Not just, but it is a presentation.
I can believe it now.
I just wonder if um who who is the, do we know who the group is gonna be that's gonna explore the potential alternative sources of funds? And is that that comes back to the board? That the finance staff?
That's made up of our finance, um led by our vice chancellor, uh or acting vice chancellor of finance. Um, it's made by the associate vice chancellor. We now have a budget director. That individual will be involved in it. I will be involved in it or the chancellor will be involved in it. Our bond advisors will be involved in it. Our bond counsel will be involved in it. And then we also have our legal team that is involved in that. So it's a combination of individuals, um. Some of which helped to craft this report um that you got tonight. But they'll also, just like we have in the past, come back to the board with recommendations that we go forward. Either endorsed by the chancellor, recommending to the board that we move forward with those actions. So that's kind of how we go through it. The difference this year will be the change in healthcare. We need to see how that is going to figure in to those additional revenue that we projected. When we initially did our actuarial study on that. And that was why, um, you know, Vincent indicated that we're gonna have to wait. Until we actually get that, which will be sometime around June, June, I think, June, maybe July. Um, to get that information because we'll have a half a year of data to look at. And and right now we have three months. Not enough to to establish if that's gonna be ongoing.
Are there any other questions or comments on this? Before we move to the next item, six point two, consider review of the quarterly swap portfolio summary report.
So I, we don't have a presentation uh on this. I just wanted to. I don't think there's a presentation in my.
There's there is a, there is a handout that's a part of the agenda and I can walk.
Yeah, we didn't prepare a presentation. I asked um Vincent if he would speak to that. And then the last item is the action item, so.
Okay.
And I think as uh the vice president had noted, the first item was informational. This item is informational as well, but they're they're related. Uh, also as a part of the approximately twenty nineteen and also picking up items from the F I C M A T report. Uh, we put in place whereby we provide a quarterly report on the status of the swaps that are outstanding. Originally, there were six swaps. We now have just four swaps remaining. And to sort of to cut to the chase. If we go to the last page. There is a table there that reflects the what's called the net present value. The mark to market value of those four swaps. And shows a trend line. So if you look at the right hand column, shows the trend line from uh. June thirty of twenty nineteen uh through uh March thirty first, twenty twenty three. And so that is the column that is most uh important to you. And reflects that uh in June thirtieth of twenty twenty. Uh, basically hit a at least a recent peak of a of a negative mark to market or net present value of sixty million. Because of some of the increases in short term rates. That value has decreased uh significantly. And at end of December of twenty twenty two. That negative value was sixteen point six million. It rose a little bit uh at the end of March to nineteen point seven million. And so what that value represents would be if you just wanted to. Uh, negotiate based off of current market conditions to terminate the swaps. This is what it would would cost. There's no requirement for you to to do that. But again, it's prudent for us to reflect what that value is if the board and staff are informed. And it also gets reflected, uh, those values at the end of the fiscal year get reflected within your audit report. And with that, I'll open up to any questions you might have.
Are you gonna explain to the group here about the live war going away?
Uh, yes. That will be your action item for the next item. Uh, as a lead in to that though, is that each time we provided the quarterly swap report to the board, at least over the last year and a half. We made mention or sort of prime the pump that you were aware that there is what's called uh. this transition from LIBOR. And I'll get into more detail on that as we get to the, to the next item.
Next, that a, a question. So it says that the sum out represents the estimated amount that the district need to pay the counterparty on the swaps to terminate the swap agreement or if certain other conditions occur. What are those other conditions?
I don't have my legal counsel, I think he's on the on the, on network there. But, um, basically if there was a, uh, a default under the swaps, uh, then the amount could come due. And so that would be a risk component and that we try to evaluate. And so that's another reason why we make this report available.
Any other questions on this, colleagues? This is an informational item. Okay, we can move to six point three, action. Go ahead, Dr. John.
Okay. Uh, six point three, again, interrelated with the two informational items that we had. Um. The Fed, in conjunction with the SEC and, uh, a number of market, uh, participants, determined that it was best to transition from LIBOR, which is, uh, an interest rate index. And LIBOR stands for the London, London Interbank Offering Rate. That is the index that is used for your interest rate swaps when they were put together in two thousand and five. In the last couple of years, again, it was determined that, uh, LIBOR should no longer be used uh, because it wasn't transparent enough. And so in June, end of June of this year, uh, LIBOR can no longer be used. And again, based off of the recommendation of, um, of the Fed, uh, the SEC and market participants, uh, SOFR was put in place as an alternative index. And so any financial transaction, not just for all things, but any financial transaction based off of LIBOR now has to switch to SOFR or another alternative index. And again, this has to be accomplished by, uh, June thirtieth of, of this year. Uh, through our engagement with the district, uh, Evercrest, uh, advisors, which is a swap advisory firm, has been involved with us and has, um, worked through a process that, uh, borrows from the protocols that have been put in place for transitioning to SOFR. And so they have talked with Morgan Stanley, who is the counterparty on the swaps, to enter into what is called a bilateral agreement to transfer the district swaps to SOFR. And the reason for going that approach versus, uh, just relying on the protocols, which is sort of automatic, is that it will provide the district with a stronger paper trail uh, to document the transition so that should questions come up in, in the future, uh, you've got that documentation in place. Uh, and as, and as well, that's at least in this instance, a more preferred route to go, even though the economic results will be the same whether you went with the protocols or where, whether you went with this bilateral, bilateral agreement.
VP Quinlan.
Uh, I'd like to move to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three dash ninety-five.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Let's go ahead and go to roll call. I apologize. Who was the second? Second was trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Okay.
Brito, thank you. Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzales Yuen?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Villarreal?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Motion passes. Great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and move to the consents. Uh, can I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
Move, approve.
Thank you, trustee Withrow, second. Second, trustee Reese, thank you, roll call. Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzales Yuen?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Villarreal?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, colleagues. We will now move to action, twelve point one. Consider approval of amendment number three to the design-build agreement with XL Construction. This is, okay. Uh, I have a motion on the table. Trustee Withrow, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Gonzalez Yuen. Roll call, please. I'm sorry, discussion, go ahead.
Um. The agenda meeting, we had some, uh, discussion on this and I think that the board should hear that while it's going through that.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Chancellor, please.
So this is involving, um, I think we're calling it BCC West. Um, for, for lack of a, a, a better name, that's been batted around. Um, and what, there's really two types of bids that there's others, but the, the two main types of bids that we go is, uh, design bid, arrangements, design bid build. And the other one is.
Can our guests on Zoom please mute? Thank you.
Okay, and then, thank you. And then the other one is design build. This was to be a design build, meaning that the architects would work with the construction firm. Thereby, when you get to the part where you actually start building, that there's less finger pointing, there's less, um, discussion about the design, architects say, we put it this way, the builder says, I can't build it that way, so we get back and forth with change orders. So in this particular case, we have had some issues with DSA, the, uh, state architect firm, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, um, IVC Smith. Um, and there's been some issues regarding the, the actual documents of whether we can or cannot move forward with actually designing based upon the architectural designs that were submitted by DSA. They have been kicked back to us for us to review. We need to do some assessments on that to make that determination. And in the meantime, we have, um, dilapidated building that's sitting there, that is starting to, uh, attract the unhoused. Um, there's been a lot of water damage, um, there's safety hazards, uh, there's stagnant water. And basically what we're asking the board to do is to give us authorized, it will still be within the sixty-five point five million. Um, but to authorize us, rather than waiting after to go through all of the assessment of the design and resubmit to DSA, that we use this time during the summer to demolish the building, um, to store the items that we've already purchased in advance, uh, because we did not want to get caught up with, um, a lag time in logistics, so we need to put that, those items somewhere. And we need to do some glazing, um, and all of that is included in this particular bid. So it really is to, to take away that, um, the hazard that is there, the safety hazard uh, in moving forward. So the staff recommends and IVC Smith, if I didn't cover everything, you could please chime in.
No, that was perfect. We're just trying to move the project forward, so the demolition at this time will be perfect during summertime.
We should approve.
Thank you, VP Quinlan, and I think we had a, do we have a second? That was, uh, trustee Gonzalez Yuen. And so let's go ahead and move to roll call. Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzales Yuen?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Villarreal?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yeah.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Motion passes. Great, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move to our last action item, which is twelve point two. Consider adoption of resolution number twenty-two slash twenty-three dash ninety-four to the district bank signers. Do you have any discussion on this or anything, Chancellor? Otherwise, we can move. Okay. Motion by trustee Gonzalez Yuen, second by trustee Withrow, roll call. Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzales Yuen?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Villarreal?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you all very much. We'll go ahead and move to board of trustees' reports. I'll start to my left, trustee Gonzalez Brito, do you have anything to report?
Uh, just that I've been meeting with classified staff leaders, staff senate leaders and, um, and academic senate leaders and hope to have some more of those meetings on the different colleges. And I will be at the CTE event on Saturday, so I look forward to it at Laney.
Thank you. Trustee Johannes?
I have nothing to report at this time, please.
Thank you, VP Quinlan.
So just to remind people of the, uh, Laney CTE open house on Saturday. And then I got a note in my email today that Merritt is having their CTE open house on Friday. So, uh, take advantage to learn more about our CTE programs, what our students are doing to improve our local economy and, um, some amazing things going on.
Great, thank you. Trustee Gonzalez Yuen?
I'm looking forward this week to attending the, um, conference of Asian Pacific Americans in Higher Education, and I want to do a special shout out to the College of Alameda and Berkeley City College, uh, both of whom's helped sponsor, uh, the event. Um, you know, I'm always looking at, um, where the leadership in our state comes from, and I'm noticing that the president of Apahi is Rowena Tomening, uh, former BCC president, and Frank Chong is our vice president for, former, um, in, of Apahi, former president at Laney College. We turn out a lot of talent in this district and send it all over the state. Um, and they're coming back to Oakland to, uh, to celebrate. So I hope to see our colleagues there if you're, if you're there. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Reese?
No reports.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Okay, um, the only thing I'll report, um, we have a lot of events coming up. Um, the two that I attended since our last meeting was the uh, city Berkeley Sosa Chavez celebration, which was held at BCC, was an amazing group of folks. And then the night right after that was the fundraiser for the undocumented student center at BCC as well. Um, I did not win in the raffle, so next time I'll have to do that. Um, but it's really great to be in community with folks again, really excited. Um, we have a lot of other things coming up, which I will cover in my next report. So we'll go ahead and go to announcements before we adjourn. Oh, um, I apologize, President Pope, what about the student trustees? Oh, I am so sorry. Yes, of course. If you have any reports, please go ahead.
Um, I just have a few things to report. Uh, first, I would like to congratulate all the students who are receiving acceptances from UCs. Um, I know they're still coming out on a rolling basis, but congratulations to all the students. And then I would also like to grad, um, congratulate a friend and fellow student worker, Natasha Massand. Um, she ran for student trustee and she won, so, um, very congratulations to her. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, student trustee Latino and student trustee Hogan, do you have anything to report?
No, no reports, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we can go to announcements.
Um, I don't see any announcements, Joshua, right? Did he get an email?
Sasha, do we have any announcements? That were sent to VP Quinlan? Oh, yeah, I sent them, I emailed them to him earlier. He, you didn't get it, trustee? Quinlan? Sasha, do you want to go ahead and just read them for now? Yeah, let me pull up. I think we have them on our end. One moment. Okay. Enrollment is now open for summer and fall twenty twenty-three semesters and fall is free at the Peralta Colleges. Please visit peralta.edu to start the enrollment process. Save the date for graduation events. The first ever in-person Rice's Peralta Latinx graduation will be on May eighteenth at Laney College Theater, starting at four P M. The sixteenth annual African and African-American graduation will be on May twentieth, twenty twenty-three at eleven A M. Berkeley City College will be on May twenty-fourth at Ziller Ball Call on the UC Berkeley campus at eleven A M. Also on May twenty-fourth, Merritt Colleges ceremony will be at the Paramount Theater in Oakland at five thirty P M. Laney College graduation will be on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three at the Laney Field at eleven A M. Also on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, College of Alameda ceremony will be two P M at the College of Alameda Field. The third annual Peralta Online Equity Conference begins tomorrow morning at nine A M and runs through Friday, April twenty-eighth. Visit gems.peralta.edu to learn more about the Peralta Online Equity Rubric and to register for this free online conference. The Parcel Tax Measure Risk Oversight Committee is meeting here in the boardroom tomorrow, Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, from three to five P M. The Board Committee for Student Success and Accreditation will meet here in the boardroom on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, at two P M. Please join us at College of Alameda on Wednesday, May third, at twelve thirty P M for the groundbreaking ceremony for the new Transportation Technology Center. Please visit build.peralta.edu to RSVP if you plan to attend. That is all.
Trustee Delphine Pope? Um, I'd like to just make a, a personal announcement. Um, I will be going on vacation the first time in this year, um, tomorrow until May the first. In my absence, the deputy chancellor, Dr. Stephanie Broker, will be in charge. Only call with this in emergency.
Thank you, Chancellor, well deserved. And with that, I think we can adjourn. Thank you very much.